Got all your information?
Okay.
Great, and how long do you expect the rebate process to probably take?
Well, probably around 12 weeks or so, I believe.
Because it's been very busy with the drought, I assume.
Correct.
And what do you think of everything with all your landscape and how do you feel about it?
Oh, very happy, very happy, yes. Actually, once, I think it's starting to get established, so once more established, it'll probably be less work.
And would you do this again?
Probably, yeah. We did both landscape and softscape. And prior to this, this was all driveway. There was no walkway. This was, the entire front was grass. There was a small walkway off to the side and then a little one toward the front. But basically, it was all grass. The trees were here, and really, that's about it. And then we added the stone and then all the plantings, and here it is.
All right, we're here in San Clemente, closer to the coast, on 107 Espinade. We happen to be at a home that's up for sale. So if you're ready to move into a house that doesn't have a lawn and you want to save water and it's moving ready, so you don't have to do any work to take out your lawn, then this is a great home. And this is Liz, and she's the homeowner. She'll tell us a little bit about the house. So tell us about the yard and the water savings you're getting here.
Okay, well, when we first moved here three years ago, the only thing back here was the tree. It's a magnificent tree. But I came from a farming background, and I was a little tired of that. So I wanted to make this as simple and maintenance-free as possible. So I planted things that really I knew would be water-wise and not take a great deal of care. And then I planted a few things with intention, knowing that I would water them, but they would be serving a purpose, like my garden or my lemon trees, my plum tree, my avocado tree. And then, instead of a lawn, I put down the pebble rock. And at first, everybody was just thinking that was not going to work and that wouldn't look good, and they were really questioning me. But when it was all said and done, it turned out beautiful and people really enjoy it now.
And do you think you're getting a lot of water savings out of this type of yard?
Oh, absolutely, definitely. And it's nice to not have such a gigantic water bill. Originally, when I did this, the drought actually wasn't the reason for me doing it. It's just I wanted that simple life, and I didn't want to be, I don't know, shelling out my money in ways I would rather spend it other ways. But it turned out to be so easy to take care of and yet beautiful at the same time. And I think that's the thing, is that you can have both at the same time. Sometimes you think, oh, it's got to be complicated and really lush to be beautiful, but that's not always the case.
And so you think the way that you planted things also helps save water in the way that you've done it all?
Yes, absolutely. For instance, here, like I have my sage that's more drought tolerant, and then I have roses planted in between in the mix. And that kind of keeps the soil from drying out, so that the roses then don't take as much water as you might suppose.
That's great. And you get a lot of color out of these yards, too, where normally you just get a wash of green. You have a lot of color out here, so.
I do. It's really surprising, like the purple succulents I have over there and everything. There's a great deal of color to be had, and even varying shades of green can be really beautiful. And I also really like to experiment a little bit. And so a friend of mine had been digging out some ferns, and I said, oh, well, I'll take a few of those. And I tried planting those. And while they aren't typically thought of as drought tolerant, they love the moisture that we get here at night. So the marine layer brings in all this fog and all this moisture, and so amazingly, they thrive. They grow like a weed on this property, and so it gives it more of a lush sensation. So I think that's a thing to watch out, too, like in your own little microclimate, what might really thrive?
That's really great. When I first came back here, I immediately thought of a California native Mediterranean-type garden rather than a New England-type garden. I think it's really great what you've done, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we've showed you a few steps to help you conserve water. This is one of the signs that I hope you've seen around town. Andrew Kanzler designed this, and this is his baby. And I want to reiterate, if there's any question in your mind, if you've got questions about water conservation, Andrew's the guy to call. Andrew, would you give the folks your phone number again?
All right, the fastest way to reach me is 949-366-1553. That's how you get ahold of me.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. And I want to thank you again, from all the residents of the city of San Clemente, I want to thank you personally for all your hard work and helping us stumble our way through this drought stuff.
It's been a pleasure. It's been great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I want to leave you with my top five water-saving tips. Underwater your landscapes. Don't be afraid to let your lawn go a little bit brown. During the next funding cycle, the Municipal Water District of Orange County will have some incentives available to help you transform your lawn into a drought-tolerant yard. We've seen a little bit of that around town already. You can learn more at www.ocwatersmart.com. And one of the best things that everybody can do is take a look at your water bill, scrutinize it. Take a look and make sure you understand what all those numbers are. Andrew can help you with that, too. You can see how many gallons you used that particular month. The other thing you can do is you can capture gray water for irrigation use on your plants around the house. And gray water you can use from the kitchen sink if you scrub your vegetables and capture that water in a large pot. Use that to water your plants. And another thing you could do is set a timer when you shower and just think about how long you're spending in the shower. And please, if you haven't done so, reset your sprinklers to irrigate only on the allowed days and only in the early morning or late at night. And I want to thank all you residents of the city of San Clemente. We, in total, have done a great job in meeting our water conservation targets set by the state of California. We've done a great job of that. So I want to thank you all out there for conserving, and we'll see you next time on Around Town.
All please stand, and I'll lead us in the place of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Petches, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Eggleston?
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Here.
Commissioner Brulon?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Okay, the item on our study session format tonight is vacation rentals, or STLUs as they're called, now zoning regulations, with Adam Metamian as the staff planner. With that, I'd like to turn the meeting shortly over to our Assistant City Attorney for a discussion on eligibility to partake in discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and council members. Yeah, just a brief note on procedure for tonight related to FPPC regulations and conflicts of interest. Because the council is dealing with potential regulations in the zoning code, changes in the zoning code, that could affect all residential properties within the city and within specific zones, we have some conflicts to deal with because everybody on the commission lives within a residential zone. The FPPC regulations dictate that if a commissioner lives within 500 feet of a property being impacted by a decision, that that commissioner has to recuse. You all live within 500 feet of a property potentially being impacted by your discussion tonight. So that would lead to a conflict and potential recusal. Now, we are also going to be discussing possible zone-by-zone regulations, and that also affects individual commissioners. Now, if everybody were conflicted and there was no way out, we wouldn't be holding a commission meeting tonight. That would cause a problem. We are holding this because there's an exception called the public generally exception in the FPPC regulations. And what that says is if the public generally is impacted in the same way that a commissioner or a council member is impacted, then there's no recusal necessary. It's a way back in from that conflict. The regulations require that 25% or more of the public generally has to be impacted in the same manner. So what you do when you have this type of exception being reviewed is you look at the total real property, in this case, the parcels in the city, and you analyze how many of those will be impacted potentially by the regulations. Now, we're going to be doing our discussion in several parts tonight. The first, we'll be analyzing regulations citywide. You can do the math. If every possible residential property is impacted, you're well above 25%. In fact, you're pretty close to 100%, which requalifies every planning commissioner. We will then be discussing altogether the RVL, RL, and RML zones, basically the single-family zones. The percentage of properties impacted there as opposed to all residential properties citywide are right at around 91%, which requalifies every commissioner who lives within those zones or within 500 feet of those zones. The next group of zones we will be discussing are the RM and RH zones. The percentage of properties impacted by these regulations in those zones is right at about 36%, which again, requalifies the commissioners that live within those zones or within 500 feet of those zones. Finally, we will be discussing mixed-use zones with the exception of MU 3.2, and there are no commissioners who live within those mixed-use zones. For MU 3.2, the chairman will have to recuse himself, exactly as happened with the general plan amendment discussion. That's being treated separately because MU 3.2 was pulled out from the other mixed-use zones as an area where the council wanted to focus on revitalizing. And so we have to discuss specifically how vacation rentals, STLUs, could impact MU 3.2. That will be the last part of our discussion at that point. The chairman will recuse himself, dismiss himself, and the gavel will be taken over by the vice chair or the assistant chair. With that, are there any questions regarding the approach or regarding the conflicts analysis?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. To... On our study format tonight, I'm going to now open the public comment. So if you have something you want to say tonight, fill out a comment card. I have, right now, four cards. So you're going to go early. Now growing, okay. For the public comment, you get three minutes, so please be expeditious. I might call several names in a row, and if you're the second name up, please line up along the wall here on the side so we can get through our public comment period. First up would be Mr. Harry Snyder. You have three minutes to do your visual aids. Oh, wait a minute. You have to turn that into the city...
By 3 o'clock today.
By 3 o'clock in the afternoon to the city clerk for right to cleanse it.
I was unaware of that.
That's it, sorry.
Good evening. I just want to spend a couple of minutes. I'm a property owner in North Beach. My property, it's a duplex. It's right across the street from the casino and the roundabout. Literally, if you look out my unit, my units, I have two units, you're looking at the casino and the roundabout and obviously, the Only Handsome Beach Club. So my concern is, I've been the owner of this property for 16 years, and the majority of the period of time, we've done long-term rentals. And obviously, now we want to, we've done the short-term rentals. We're registered and got all the proper paperwork, we've been doing it for about a year. And my biggest concern is that the city will potentially try to classify us in a zone where we would not be able to do the short-term rentals or insist that we live in one of the units to supposedly manage the top unit, which I have a hard time reconciling with that. Having been an owner for 16 years, I mean, you have a lot more difficulties with long-term tenants in terms of trying to get them out if there's a problem versus short-term. So I just want to remind everyone of that. And the other issue that came up at the city council meeting that I just want to remind everyone of is, there was an issue about affordable housing, that 2% of all the apartments, duplexes, condos, whatever you want to call them, are VRBOs. 2%. So 98% are currently long-term rentals. This is not a scourge on our town. I think it's been blown way out of proportion, and I just wanted to kind of share my thoughts on that. And then in closing, because we are, we technically have no neighbors across the street, I mean, unless you call Knucklehead's a neighbor, and trust me, the noise from that place is enough to drive a tenant away. I'm just concerned, when the zoning aspect goes into play, how you would zone us when there's no single-family homes across from us. We're talking literally about the casino, El Camino, a roundabout, and the Only Handsome Beach Club. I just would hope that we would get some consideration to be zoned where we would allow to be continued to do short-term rentals. So thank you for listening to me. I just wanted to share my personal position on this. Thank you.
Mr. Jack Reamer, followed by Mr. Jim Dahl.
Jack Reamer, I am Harry's neighbor, actually. My building's about 10 feet away from his. I've lived there for 16 years also. 16 years ago, when I moved there, no one would have come there to vacation at my house at that time. It was just kind of a crummy, rundown area, all those buildings were. The casino was chain-lick fence, everything was shut down. I think in the past 15 years, we've all put money in there and reinvested in those buildings. We've had, I've lived in it for pretty much most of that time. We have had tenants in there, you know, off and on throughout the years. I think part of what, I do live next to Harry, you know, literally 10 feet away from him. I've seen what goes on over there, and that's what's encouraged me to do this with part of my building. I was impressed with the quality of the people that he's had there. I got to say, and no rip on you, Harry, but he had this dog that used to bark at all the dogs that walked by there before, and it drove me crazy. When the dog was gone and the tenants that he has in there now, even though they're coming and going, I don't hear them. I don't notice them. Everybody's nice. You know, I'll chat with them out on the balcony sometimes. Sometimes I don't talk to them, but I have not had any noise problems or any issues with any of those people. I do believe there's a kind of a supply and demand with these, so I question, you know, taking actions on things without really fully knowing what the outcome's going to be of that. I think that if you, you know, there is a demand. I see the demand down there. There's people having weddings at the casino. There's going to be people having weddings at the beach club, and it is convenient for them to stay there. I see groups of people coming from out of town, and they want to stay with their families and stay together and have a nice environment. If they're on vacation, they've got kids. It's a pain to stay in a hotel if you've got kids, you know? It's just, it is. And so to have a nice house or, you know, a duplex in this matter that they can stay at, it gives you more room and it's just a nicer environment. So, and I think that as they, you know, as the demand, if it decreases at some point, then the supply will take care of itself, and it'll just correct itself. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Jim Dahl, former mayor, followed by Bradley Dundalk?
Hi, sure is nice to be down here instead of up there. Jim Dahl, San Clemente resident for too long. I just want to talk a little bit about vacation rentals. We live in an area that's probably got a higher percentage of vacation rentals on our street, probably any place in San Clemente. Give you a little history of vacation rentals. My wife's grandmother, God rest her soul, back in the 50s, rented vacation rentals in San Clemente. There were very, there were a lot of them, quite a few of them at that time. And there have been ever since. You know, lots of teachers and folks that have jobs that take them out of the country for a while, use that way of renting out their homes and their apartments so they can get a little income and help pay the mortgage. And there's 450 of them in San Clemente. I imagine there's probably a lot more that aren't even reported. I know, like on our loop, Montavo, La Berrio, there's probably 40 or 50 of them, and as a matter of fact, there's probably even more than that. And we don't, believe it or not, we don't have any problems with them. Whenever there is a problem, the police respond and take care of it. So we've got a great ordinance. In fact, Wayne was on the council at the time, ordinance 1450 that we created. It's called the, quote, Rodman Ordinance. It was sort of after Dennis Rodman in Newport Beach, where he had all these big parties and caused all the trouble. And so the city of Newport Beach adopted this ordinance, and we adopted it here in San Clemente. And it can be used very well in situations where you have a short-term, a long-term, or a party or anything like that, that you can use this particular ordinance to shut them down. And as a matter of fact, as I remember, we had a situation up in Rancho San Clemente where there was a party house, that people would start parties at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning and go until dawn. And it was used very effectively there, and I think it can be used very effectively for short-term vacation rentals that become a problem. I'm sort of disappointed to hear the other night that code enforcement folks would be going out at night to try and enforce rules and regulations on noise and that kind of stuff, because it's pretty dangerous out there at night, even our little burg of San Clemente. I would think the police, the sheriff's department would be more appropriate to do that, especially at night, because these poor code enforcement folks, they don't have any weapons, they don't have any backup, they don't have any radio, they don't have anything. They're just out there by themselves, driving around in their car, so. So I think that we've had very successful vacation rentals in San Clemente. I think they should continue. As I said, use ordinance 1450 if you want to shut them down, and I think it's very appropriate to use, and it works very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And after Brad will be Jim Bieber, followed by Joe Janis.
Dear Plan Commission, I'm here to speak about, my name is Brad Dundalk. I'm here to speak about vacation rentals in mixed-use R2 and greater zones, and why there is no reason to fear that vacation rentals as a whole in all zones are going to, number one, negatively affect affordable housing with higher prices and diminished rental inventory; number two, that vacation rentals in any zone will overrun the town. First point, there are over 5,000 apartment-style housing units in San Clemente, not including condominiums. Of those, there are approximately 103 vacation rentals. This represents just 0.4 of all dwelling units in San Clemente and just 2% of all apartment dwelling units. It has been positioned that vacation rentals are lowering affordable housing stock and driving up rental prices. I would like you to consider that it is statistically impossible for 2% of housing inventory to... inventory to affect the other 98%, especially with the well-documented housing supply and demand challenges facing the city and all of Orange County and beyond. As there is no credible threat to affordable long-term housing, there's also no reason to enact a drastic owner-occupied requirement for mixed or multifamily zones. Secondly, though permits for vacation rentals have recently grown because of a threat of shutdown in permit issuance, in the actual marketplace, San Clemente grew in vacation rental inventory just 4.3% from the beginning of 2013 to the end of 2015. It went from 328 to 343, and that's what its source of VRBO.com. That equals to just 2.25% per year, or 15 rentals over the last two years. Again, statistically impossible to prove anything but very mild growth, which is directly tied to our supply and demand, because of which, along with common sense regulations, has kept vacation rentals to a minimal number in all Southern California towns around us. For example, in Newport Beach, just 1.9% of all dwellings are vacation rentals. In San Diego, it's 1.1. San Clemente, 1.3. Dana Point, 1.9. Encinitas, 1.3. Carlsbad, 1.1. Oceanside, 1.2. Short-term furnished housing is an important part of communities and needs to be part of the strategic plan for housing needs of its citizens, guests, and the businesses that benefit and serve our community. The Coastal Commission has been very clear to cities that have tried to ban or severely limit overnight accommodations to the beach that these policies will not be allowed. Instead of creating unnecessary restrictions because of fear based on zoning, owner-occupied requirements, and night limitations, please endorse common sense zoning regulations and consequences to the guests and owners who do not follow the rules. Thank you.
Mr. Bieber, followed by Joe Janis.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for having me. I wrote a letter to you the other day, and I'm hopeful that you forwarded on to the other commission members, where I asked a series of questions about this subject. Kind of odd, this whole process is a little bit backwards, and you probably followed it, by the city council sort of took this on, was gung-ho to ban vacation rentals, fell short of it, came back, was again gung-ho to ban them outright, and then decided, eh, we're going to kind of kick it to you guys. And it's kind of funny, my experience is that planning commissioners generally may take their jobs more seriously than even the city council. You don't have to appease, you don't have to face the electorate. You have almost a judicial air about yourself in delving into these matters. And so it kind of boils down to that we've got three city council members that have a vision that they simply don't like vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods. And they're going to manufacture a case to fulfill that. I mean, we can argue the aesthetics, vision, whatever, did Ole Hanson stick a shovel in here and say, "We will never have vacation rentals in any residential neighborhood," historically, back and forth. But then it gets down to, we've got to generate some, and manufacture in case, some facts to back up that up. So there's 500 vacation rentals in San Clemente, but there aren't. There aren't. I have my own private house. We rented it out for two weeks, so we could go to Europe. And we are registered with the city. We're the power to the 500, forever. Two weeks is what we put our, we paid our TOT tax, and now we're power to the 500. I have a vacation rental sandwiched between two humongous apartment buildings, two blocks in from Del Mar. Historic place that we fixed up, we worked with the city, did every requirement. We have long-term, we have short-term in that. And guess what? We're good neighbors. And I'm not saying I think I'm a good neighbor, or my wife's. The city described us in their report as "good neighbors," while some short-term lodging units are "good neighbors," produce zero effects, no complaints. That's us. But baby with a bathwater, chuck us all out, we've been a positive influence on this community, hosting families that otherwise would never be able to see their families in San Clemente, because they can't flip, you know, $3,000 for a hotel. Grandma couldn't make it up the stairs at the Hampton. It's been a positive effect. So real quick, you know, I'll zip through them real quick. On the crime, you've been given a bunch of gobbledygears citing the number of calls to short-term vacation rentals versus the entire city. And that's the most apples-to-bananas comparison there is. I mean, how many calls of noise are we getting at The Cove or complaints up in Toledo? But you have short-term vacation rentals in the pure area, in, by my neighborhood, and of course, you're going to have more comparison, or more noise. Would the report be more accurate if you were to say, "Here's the number of calls from short-term rental units versus long-term rental units in the same geographic area"? Would that be some statistic you could base it on? Because they throw out the crime, so the theory would be if we ban vacation rentals, we will have less crime. But you can't even gauge what the crime's going to be, because you don't, you have a baloney figure that's been ginned up. You don't even know how many vacation rental units are out there. Is it my house that I rented out for two weeks? Or is it someplace that have people going in and out, in and out, in and out every weekend? Who knows?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Janis, followed by Jim Laurent.
Could, I'd like to speak for six minutes, if that's not possible. Do I have some coming up to finish my presentation?
You can do that. You have three minutes, and then whoever else can step in for three minutes. So who is your...
Okay. It's hard to understand what it's like living next to a vacation rental, a large one, unless you actually do. We can explain it to you, and you'll say, "Yeah, I know," but you really don't know unless you live next to them. So we tried to put together a little slideshow to show you what it's like. So the purpose, is this where I do this?
Yes.
Okay. The purpose of the presentation is to show the planning commission the effects of the short-term lodging units that are having on residential neighborhoods, and hopefully for us to recommend that we could put some rental limitations and occupant loads on these arguments. Now, technology has changed things a lot. Jim Dahl's grandmother used to do this. All around the world, you can go on the internet and find stuff now. The internet has made renting homes more popular, many websites, VRBO, Airbnb, HomeAway. They're multi-billion dollar companies now. I read that Airbnb is now a $25 billion company. So they help all residents do this. They advertise on the internet. It goes worldwide, and they tell you, you know, you get the amenities, the occupant load, this one's 18, sleeps 12 in beds. They have reviews, talks about 16 members of surf teams plus their coaches. That's 25 people that have come and been residents. They had a great time, and so did this big founder reunion, 25 people for two weeks. And they recommend it to other people also. So there's also availability calendar, and on this calendar, you could go on and click on one of the days, and where you want to go through, and send the money in, and you got it. There's no vetting or anything. So, you know, we really don't know who's going to be there or when they're going to be there. They also have schedule rates. This one gets $14,000 peak season per week. July 4th is $16,000, so this occupant gets $70,000 in one month. Now, this is big business. Now, is there a zoning problem or code enforcement? I really don't know. But businesses that operate in residential areas, they stress the neighborhood, they create noise, they create parking problems. Now, here's a map of this unit. Look how close all the units are to this. Small larks in a big resort, right there. People all the way in the cul-de-sac on there and hear the noise at night, and all the people right below and in front hear it constantly. This is the backyard. Imagine 25 people in the backyard with the close proximity of all these houses. Now, I'd like to rent this place too. I hope none of you guys would decide you're going to go rent it now. But anyhow, it's really close proximity. This is a, people arriving, four cars in the house, all on the street, red solo cups on the cars, people drinking in the street. Here's someone that decided to park the opposite way in the wrong street. And these aren't bad people, they're just vacationers. Here's a letter complaint, and this is a review from one of our neighbors. Over the time, peace and quiet of this area has been broken. There has been many large groups, surf teams, multiple family friends. The home is rented out year-long and books solid.
Thank you very much. And for the record, your name is Valerie Hirsch?
Valerie Hirsch, yeah. I'll continue.
Continue.
Books solid. The neighbors are tired of having to go to the home late at night and ask them to be quiet, especially during weeknights. Renters are in the pool at all hours, especially playing games, sitting on the decks at 3:00 a.m. We can hear every word of their conversation as if they were in our own bedroom below them. There are many businesses that could be operated out of single-family dwellings that would have less effects on our neighborhoods than do STLUs, but our neighborhoods are not zoned for businesses. STLUs are definitely businesses that have negative effect on our neighborhoods. While we strongly support a homeowner's right to open their home for a few vacation rentals, each year, we are asking the planning commission to recommend limiting the number of days a home can be rented for short-term rentals to 30 days per calendar year, and limit the number of occupants to seven, which is the same limit given to group homes and bed and breakfasts. Any larger number puts too much stress on our residential neighborhoods. This is a motel sign. Let's see here. We disagree with one of our city council members that these businesses should be allowed to operate in residential neighborhoods. We don't believe that suggested common sense rules should be applied to something that makes no sense in our residential neighborhoods. Help us protect our neighborhoods. Just one comment, since I have a minute left. There is a home similar to this near my home, and we've actually, my neighbors have counted over 100 people on their outside decks having parties, and I don't even think that's safe, let alone a proper use of a home in a residential neighborhood. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Jim Laurent, followed by Susan Nelson. And after that will be Tricia Madding.
You going to reset this? Thank you. I got shorted one time at a city council meeting. I'm still getting over it. I was actually, thank you, Valerie, for taking my lead there. I was going to speak after Joe and fill that void, but after listening to a couple of the comments that were made in the beginning of the session, I felt like I needed to talk about my specific situation, because it's one thing to own one of these properties and rent it, it's another thing to live next door to it. No one should have to live next door to a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year rental property in a residential neighborhood. That's what I do. That's where I live. That's my world. My wife recently was diagnosed with cancer. She's had several surgeries. She had one yesterday. And she's home recovering right now. I got home today, and there's, what is it, February 10th, Wednesday, February 10th? Middle of winter, right? We don't have vacation rentals. We don't have summer rentals, February. Four cars, all from Nevada, big SUVs, big trucks, four families, multiple kids with each car. There's got to be 15, 16, maybe 20 people at this house right now screaming and enjoying the pool, because it's a beautiful day. If it was raining, maybe I'd be not so upset right now. Owner-occupied properties that are doing this, I have no problem with, because the owner's there and is maintaining the peace. They got to answer to their neighbors. But these non, these businesses that come in and buy these properties, property owners that buy just strictly to rent over the year, it's just not fair to the residents that buy, that are contributing to the community. A lot of stuff's been said about the money that these tourists bring into our town, and then a lot's been said on our side about the residents that live here full-time. I go downtown, I eat downtown, I shop downtown. I go to Sam's Shoes, I don't go to the outlet mall. You know, that's just kind of how we roll. We support our local businesses. I support Shade Tree Automotive. I don't think very many people are at Shade Tree Automotive that are visiting the place next door to me. Places like what Joe showed us, that's becoming the norm now down in Southwest. They stage these places, very professionally done. It's a business. It's not mom and pop renting out their place. One thing I wanted to correct that Mr. Dahl spoke about earlier was this Rodman Rule. I've got a place next door to me that's had over 19 calls to the sheriff's department. 19. We talk about eight, nine, 10, now it's 12 bad apples. If we've got a Rodman Rule that takes care of this problem, why do we still have eight, nine, 10, 12 bad properties? And the answer is because the way our city is enforcing, and the way the police department is enforcing this, is each person that comes in, each new group, gets a blank slate. So if you have 35 groups, like I had...
Thank you.
You get 35 chances.
Thank you very much. Susan Nelson, followed by Tricia Madding.
Hi. I am not a public speaker. I'm a mom, I'm a nurse, but I'm here. And I think that, first, I'd like to say thank you for spending all this time trying to work on this very difficult situation. I can see in some instances that it could be a good thing. If you had a slab leak in your house, you don't want to stay in a hotel, and you can see that that would be a good resolve. But what we've experienced when it's flipped over and it's not so much, and I really wish we could all just go to the Fisherman and sit and have a bread bowl and discuss this, because really good ideas come on napkins. But I think, starting with that general plan that you've worked on, I think that's a great start. And one of the council sessions, Don Cech said that she had never heard, you know, a family complain about not being able to have housing. And you spend a lot of time looking on social media to see how people are, you know, dealing with this situation. And there was a mom that got on there that has a family of five, and had said that she's staying in an apartment because they can't get to a house, because these people snatch up these houses to turn them over to make them just a business. So families are being denied housing so that other people can run a business, and I don't think that's quite right. But thank you again for all the time that you're putting into this.
Thank you for being here. Tricia Madding? You'll be followed by, if I get the card to work, Jean Gilbert?
Good evening. My name is Tricia Madding, and I live in a single-family dwelling located in an established R1-zone neighborhood in Southwest. It is because of its R1-zone, single-family residential neighborhoods west of I-5 that San Clemente is still the village-by-the-sea envisioned by Ole Hanson. The general plan, San Clemente's foundational planning policy document, recognizes these time-honored residential neighborhoods are an integral part of San Clemente's cultural heritage and essential to San Clemente's charming character, and states its first and primary goal is to retain and enhance its established R1 neighborhoods. To execute the general plan's goals, San Clemente established the zoning ordinance. Zoning is a tool. It regulates the use of buildings and land. The zoning ordinance states that no building shall be used except in strict conformance with the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance lists the uses of buildings and land allowed in R1 zones in its residential use table. If a use is not listed, it is prohibited unless it is similar to a use that is listed. Short-term STLUs are not a listed use in the residential use table. Therefore, STLUs are prohibited. Use of single-family dwellings in R1 zones unless STLUs are found to be similar to a use that is listed in the table. STLUs are not similar to any list use listed in the table. To find that a use is listed, a use not listed is similar to a use that is listed, is a two-step process. First, the function of the two uses has to be comparable. STLUs use single-family homes for lodging, not residing. The only permitted use of single-family homes in R1 zones. STLUs are commercial businesses, a non-residential use. STLUs' function is they provide transient's unsupervised short-term accommodations for profit. The only lodging use listed in the residential use table are bed and breakfasts. The zoning ordinance explicitly prohibits bed and breakfasts on lots in R1 zones west of I-5. Therefore, short, STLUs on lots on R1 zones west of I-5 are prohibited. STLUs are also not similar to a residential use listed in the residential use table. The function of single-family dwellings is to provide long-term detached residence for one or more persons living as a household unit. As I stated earlier, single-family dwellings provide, STLUs use single-family dwellings to provide transients with unsupervised short-term lodging for accommodations. Transients are not residents. They are not neighbors. Their use of single-family dwellings is not only not similar, it is incompatible with the function of single-family dwellings on R1 zones west of I-5. For this reason, STLUs are a prohibited use of single-family dwellings.
Thank you. Jean Gilbert, followed by Jalinda. And after that, Don Sturrock.
Hi, I'm Jean Gilbert. I'm a 10-year resident of San Clemente, and I used to be a homeowner, but I lost during the recession, and so I had to go look for a place to rent. And that was a few years ago, and when I did it, I was lucky enough to find a place, and fortunately, I had a good enough application that I was able to get what I had. But everything, most everything I was looking at, you know, it's find, it was a perfect thing. Oh, it's a house, it's got this many bedrooms, it's got this many baths, and it's like, oh, it's $2,200 bucks. And then you get in there and you go through it, oh, it's furnished. Oh, what's that? Oh, it's $2,200 bucks a week. And that's what a lot of this supply was. Now, I understand having the short-term rentals, and I could see having the ones where it's an owner-occupied property. The other ones is a business smelling a cat. The other ones is a business smelling a cash cow. I run a small business out of my apartment, and I'm not allowed to have people come over. They're running a business out of residential place, why are they allowed to have people come over? You know, it's not a business, it's an investment, and I understand having to get your money back, but you might wanna temper what is going on. It does not add to the community, it can actually start taking away from it. A friend of mine that lives up in the valley, he went and visited Hermosa Beach over the weekend, and he came down here and saw me. And the property up there is just getting so ridiculous that everything on the strand is empty, and it's gotten to the point where it's wealthy speculators. Is it gonna get to the point where it just drives prices here because you can make 25, 70 grand a month, and just, okay, I'll buy that because I can make that kinda money? So where does commonsense come in? Where does the community come in? It's, as a previous retail owner, I know that it's a lot easier to make business with return customers, and if you have a constant flow of people coming through your place, are they gonna be a return customer? Maybe once a year when they rent that apartment complex? But it's the regular customers that are gonna build your community, that your residents are gonna build the community. So you need to think about limiting it in some manner to where it just doesn't go crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jalinda, followed by Don Slater, followed by Mark McGuire.
I would like to clarify two things. Number one, in eight different states, the Supreme Courts and city law cases, numerous of them, has declared that vacation rentals are not commercial businesses, they are residential use. And that's important to know, because when you guys first started, you were like hotels and all of this sort of thing, but that's, you guys have pamphlets on that. The second thing that I wanna clear up is there are 144 rentals on Zillow today for people to rent. So the thought that vacation rentals are excluding people from any rentals in San Clemente is not, is false also. I would like to say that somebody, I appreciate the pictures that I saw, I'm gonna address this. I am very familiar with these people and the houses that they're next to. Vacation rentals should not be run that way. So because we have vacation rentals and we're in San Clemente, commonsense laws, not throwing out everything. These vacation rentals are not being run correctly. So I heard at the last city planning mini-meeting, you know, three strikes, you're out, we'll start there. The other thing that I wanna address is, there's a huge difference between North Beach, multi-use, and Southwest San Clemente. And there was a woman who spoke several commission meetings ago that said, what you have to do is you need to look in the future and decide what you want for San Clemente. And I agree with that point. She's opposed massive vacation rentals, and I agree with that point. In Southwest San Clemente, there are neighborhoods, and I think that, like, having so many there, having some sort of moratorium, I don't think that they should be eliminated altogether. There are a lot of investors, not investors necessarily, well, I have, from a management perspective, we have people that own their properties, that purchase them to be able to come and use the home. So changing the law after they've invested some hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then saying, you can't do that anymore, I don't think it's right. But to say, okay, we will allow you if you obey the rules, and if you don't obey the rules, then you're out, that is more commonsense to me. My husband and I and my children are living in North Beach right now, during a transitional time. I lived in Forrester Ranch, we're gonna move to Southwest San Clemente, and we're in the process of living in North Beach in a property that we're selling. There's not these communities that people are talking about. They were made to be rentals. I don't feel super safe with my kids. We have a gate around our yard, and it's completely different living.
Mr. Slater. Followed by Mark McGuire, followed by Brad Malan.
Hello. Probably most of you know who I am. Probably most of you know who I am. I have my heart and my soul in North Beach, and I've done a lot of work advocating for North Beach, so you know how much I care. I've lived in North Beach for six or seven years now, and I was brought up on that beach. My diapers changed on North Beach. Just family there, living there. So I do have a lot of care about it. There's probably about five of me's in the community that have multi-unit apartment buildings and live in one of the apartments and are renting out the rest as vacation rentals. I'm very, very picky. I vet my customers, and I vent on my customers when it's necessary. So I keep 'em in line. And I take a lot of care, fix up my place, it looks nice, and I think that I should be able to go on vacation too. So please keep in mind that if I can go away once in a while, I'll have somebody in my apartment watching and taking care of it as if it was their own while I'm away. So try to make a provision for that. I'd still, I'd like to live and do some things. I've been here mostly all the time. And I'll keep looking after and looking out for North Beach and loving it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Mr. Mark McGuire, followed by Brad Malan. The last card, listen, somebody else has not spoken.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Mark McGuire. I know you guys are gonna grapple with this in a thoughtful way. The only thing that I wanted to add, and because I was watching it at home, and I was at the city council meeting for another matter, when they were grappling with the regulations, and then when I came in, I heard some reference to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission is grappling with this issue now. You know, this is a thing that's really in flux. There have been some staff reports where they've talked about the different programs that have been put in place, some of which they've embraced. It seems to me that you have to, at least in the coastal zone portion, deal with, at least try to anticipate where Coastal's gonna go on this. My sense is they're gonna pick up the Manhattan Beach ban pretty soon, and they're likely to reject the ban, if I had to predict. If you made me bet, I'd bet that they're not gonna allow an outright prohibition. It doesn't sound like you're going down the path of an outright prohibition in all zones anyway, but if you are thinking of that in the coastal zone, please get some advice as to whether that's likely to pass muster. I do think that there's a difference between R1 and the multifamily zones. You don't wanna be cavalier about that, as if R1 has an expectation of perfect privacy and the people in the multifamily zones have no right of any privacy. I don't think that's fair. I know that one of the council members is grappling with that issue, you know, he wants the same treatment. But I do think the expectations are different, and the practice is different. A lot of the multifamily is next to busier areas, you know, there's more activity anyway. So I think that that's a distinction, and frankly, I think that that could be relevant when you present whatever you come down with to the Coastal Commission. If you've got some visitor service, if you've got the vacation rentals in at least some of your multifamily zones in the coastal zone, I think that's gonna be a lot more palatable than if you do an outright ban. So I wish you good luck on this, it's not an easy topic, but that was my two cents. Thanks.
Last card tonight so far is Brad Malan.
Commissioners, I have no dog in this fight. My discussion tonight recalls around the processes being followed. I've tried to read most of the documents, I don't see any economic analysis. That's where this should start. Why don't we have incredibly deep and well-thought-out economic analysis? What will happen to the property owners? What will happen to the businesses nearby? That should be the fundamental starting point. Secondary starting point is identifying the problems and identifying solutions, short of kicking these people out. I mean, maybe that's the final solution, but not until we've analyzed it. But more importantly, why isn't there detailed legal analysis? You guys are doing an emotional decision, it seems to me, without the background. I can't think of a single business that would make a decision with as little information as you have. And yet, that's what our planning council, planning commission, and more important, the city council's doing. Why don't you adjourn this until the staff and the city attorney responds to all the questions that have been done, and all the citizens can read the answers to those? Because otherwise, all we're doing is being subjective. That's not what our planning council's supposed to be. We're supposed to be informed, and I know you all are, and I know you're serving large hours, but why don't we have that information in front of you? Why didn't the citizens have that information? Do we really want to find out that if these rentals are banned, that half of our businesses go out of business, or they're not able to operate profitably? Or that when you ban it, the lawsuits, like we're seeing now throughout the city, are exponential, and all we're doing is defending lawsuits that we might have been advised upfront, we had no legal right to stop? I would think if I were in your position, I'd send staff and the lawyers back and say, get back to us. We can adjourn this meeting tonight, get back to us with the answers to the questions. Get back to us with a complete analysis of all those things, so that we can make an informed, not a subjective, decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? If not, we'll close the public area. And...
Mr. Chairman? Briefly? I wonder if our Assistant City Attorney could talk about, one woman came up here and said that these are not considered to be businesses, and I don't know if Mal has received all the information that we received, but what I read here, because I wanted to be sure that there was a clarification on that, what I read, it says court decision sold that short-term rentals are not a business or commercial use under typical basic Home Owner Association declaration wording. And it refers specifically to subdivisions. It doesn't refer to, for example, you know, single-family residential areas. So I don't know if you're getting all the information we're getting, you know, this just came in today, but I think it's important that you get the type of communication that we get here. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I saw that this afternoon, and I haven't reviewed those cases, but I am familiar with the general case law that's being referred to. I think what you've mentioned is accurate. Those cases deal with a different issue than we're dealing with tonight, in that it deals with HOA and subdivision rules.
Yeah, that's the way I read it, the cases in Alabama and Arizona, I think it was. At this time, we're in our study session format here, which has been a lot of work going on up to this time, since we've been having study sessions on this since early December. So I'd briefly like to just query some of the commissioners here, just briefly, just what are your goals tonight to try to achieve? I think personally, to sum it up, we are about land use, that's what our charter is, that's what the state law empowers us to do. We are a city and a nation of laws, and I for one wanna take a look at our general plan, which is our law that was adopted, and analyze that versus the questions in front of us tonight, and that and the zoning ordinance, and try to get our hands around land use. That's kinda my objective. Mr. Crandall.
And I think that, that's great, but I'd like to find out from the city attorney right out of the get-go, per our existing zoning ordinance, not the general plan or anything like that, when an item is not addressed in a zone or mentioned. What's the interpretation of, are these indeed legal, or have we just been putting a blind eye to them, allowing them to continue? And what's the interpretation on that before we even get started?
Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners, the general rule in state law is that if a use is not expressly, I just said, the general rule in our code is that if a use is not expressly listed, then it's prohibited, unless it can be deemed substantially similar to a listed use. Now, that's the general rule. There is something called course of conduct, course of dealing, and a legal principle called a stoppable. These uses have been not just tacitly permitted, but in many ways expressly permitted in the city for quite some time now. And there's a number of cases where these types of issues have arisen, where a use may not be expressly permitted in the zoning code, but the city has permitted it, whether through licensing or other regulatory procedures, and the courts have held that that course of conduct has amounted to a permission with regard to that use. So, long story short, this is not a use that is listed in our zoning ordinance, but it has been permitted through the regulatory procedure that was discussed last week by the city for a very, very long time, and it may be a difficult argument for the city to win, that through the receiving TOT payments over that course of years, and also regulating those uses, it still wasn't permitted, per se.
Now, would that apply just to ones that are in operation now, or future properties that it has not been done on?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, likely just those that have been permitted in the past. Taking that argument and pushing it into the future would be a pretty significant stretch, where you see uses allowed by courts in these types of instances, it's uses that have been in place for quite some time, through which the city has profited through taxes, TOT or something like that. Extrapolating from those instances into a future permission for other properties is quite a stretch.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggleston.
You were, I guess you asked us our goals and our objectives and so forth?
Yeah. Any individual goals? Chair Crandall's come forward with some questions, and if nobody else wants to, that's fine, you do.
If other ones wanna share, but that's also, that would be great. You know, we've gone through, what, four study sessions? We've listened to public testimony, four public sessions. I've followed the three city council meetings and the public testimony there. And tonight, I think what we're doing is really coming to, we're gonna be expressing our views about what we really feel about these vacation rentals. You know, one of the most wonderful qualities here in San Clemente has been our residential neighborhoods, and that really makes the backbone of what makes San Clemente so very special. You know, we have our landmarks such as Casa Romanica, the pier, and so forth, and our beaches, but without these neighborhood qualities, San Clemente would not be the Spanish village by the sea that we all know. When I refer to neighborhoods, I guess I really have to define what a neighborhood is. It's a place where people know each other, and you know the names of their dogs, their children, their children go to the same school, they go to the same sports, we have block parties, we help each other out. And putting commercial businesses in these areas, especially in single-family neighborhoods, really is problematic and has the potential of destroying what the very essence of these neighborhoods are. You know, I've been here in San Clemente since 1984, and we've had vacation rentals in San Clemente, as far as I know. Mostly, they have been in the more high-density areas. They've not been in the single-family neighborhoods as much as they have been in the high-density areas. And so what's happened now, over the last couple of years, we've had an explosion of these in our single-family neighborhoods, and the city's now regulating them. So my goal, and my objective, this evening at least, is to really unequivocally protect single-family neighborhoods, but allowing them in higher-density areas. And neighborhoods are different, and you just can't, you can't just have the same rules and regulations, I don't think, for all of the entire city, or zoning for the entire city. You can have rules and regulations, but you can't have zoning for the entire city, because the neighborhoods are so different, and they have different qualities and different characteristics and so forth. And so I think it's important for us to discuss where they should be, the number, the distance between them, along with some tight regulations and so forth. So that's my goal this evening, is to really, is really to take a look at the single-family neighborhoods, but allowing them into more high-density areas. Thank you.
Mr. Ruhl.
Yeah, I think, first I wanna mention, just respond to what one of the people made a public comment made, and perhaps I'm taking this a little too personally. I've been a resident of North Beach for over 16 years now, and someone mentioned that North Beach is not a community, it's not a neighborhood, and I personally have to take exception to that, in belonging to that community and that neighborhood, I feel very differently about that. But as far as some of the goals that I have for what we're doing here, at least tonight, I'd like to see us move from kind of a discovery mode. We've had a lot of public input, many hours, in fact, of public input, many, many letters, and it's been great. It's very important for us to get that, as well as input from staff and our attorneys. But I think, you know, we want- But I think, you know, we want to start to put some stakes in the ground, start to get some direction to staff so that they can begin to do some initial drafting of a zoning ordinance that we can look at and debate, and the public can look at as well. Like Wayne, I think we need to start to look at what zones we want to apply this to, or whether we're applying these rules to the city as a whole. I think we're going to, there's going to be definitely different opinions about that, but starting to get some traction on that might be useful as well. I'd also like to start to get some ideas on, to help with enforcement and management. I think one of the real issues here is enforcement. I think I mentioned it last week, too. A lot of these things that we want to have done and rules that we can make, the real question is, is how are we going to actually get this enforced? How are we going to be able to be effective at that? And if we can't, of course, we won't be able to enforce it. As part of that, I did want to introduce at some point this evening some ideas for information that we can collect from owners and agents. It's stuff that can be delivered electronically. It's going to, it would help with enforcement, it would help with the city's financial planning, it would help with the city's resource planning, so I think it's something we should take a look at as part of the...
In discussion, okay.
Yes, in discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Crandall? You're lighting the bulb then.
And really what, even before we can start making decisions, I think I'd like to see us establish what short-term vacation rentals are compatible with, so we can evaluate what zone it fits in. Once we can say, is it compatible with neighborhood commercial? Is it compatible with mixed use? And I think we need to make those decisions before we can really get into zones, and talking about distances from things and whatnot. So I think that's a fundamental question that needs to be answered to really get into this whole problem.
Okay. Christopher Blackwell.
Okay, so two definitions to consider. One, what is a neighborhood? And next, what is a hotel? These are two things that I've been thinking about quite a bit lately. So what I've decided is that I agree with the fact that short-term lodgings in various shapes and sizes are really just versions of hotels, and from a zoning perspective should be treated as such. Is there non-residential uses? I think that the use should be allowed in non-residential zones, but regulated accordingly. That way, you know, we can start to develop a plan that creates balance in our neighborhoods. The intended balance would be, would look like a neighborhood. You know, the character would be that of a neighborhood, but getting back to what a neighborhood really is, is it a place where there are just single-family homes, or is it a place where there are higher-density homes? And I think a neighborhood is all of the above. A residential neighborhood, regardless of the density, is just that, a residential neighborhood. So I think, you know, I'd like to see us develop a plan that creates that balance. You know, I've got many ideas that we'll, that I'll introduce, you know, during our discussions, and we'll all be introducing different ideas, but my intent and my goal is to see that happen.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
I'd like to think that we should approach this like we do other projects that come in front of us, which is how appropriate is this particular use in this particular location? And that's fundamentally, I think, our first job. And if someone presents a use that's not currently in that zone, they come in front of us and ask for conditional use permits or other variances, so that there is a mechanism for us to look at exceptions to what is already in the general plan and what is the zone. I want to look at this in a way that I feel comfortable, which is fairly pragmatic, in that I think there are four zones already in our land use plan that would allow this use. And if one had their property in this zone, I would think that they would have an argument that their use is applicable and is allowed in that zone. And I think that's the NC zone, the CC zone, the CRC zone, and the MU 4.3 zone. When you look at the zoning regulation as it's written, it specifically talks about lodging. And the other areas that we've been talking about, such as our zones and so forth, there's no discussion of that particular use. So I'm of the ilk that we really need to define, are these uses where they should be? And if they're not, what mechanism would there be for those folks to justifiably come in front of us and ask for conditional use permit? Right now, that doesn't exist, and what's happening, people are taking the advantage of use in an area that's not specifically called out, and in some cases, as we're hearing, injure the neighbors in various ways. And that doesn't seem like something that would be proper to support from a zoning use. That's not what we do. That's not how we operate. I think the new general plan is very specific about this. I know that if I was going to do timeshares or a motel or a hotel, I would pick a piece of property where that use is permitted. And if, for whatever reason, I wanted to put that in another area where it isn't specifically zoned, then I would approach the Planning Commission for a conditional use permit, a variance, a waiver, what have you, so that within the bounds of what we do and how we operate, that that could be a possibility, or it might not be a possibility. So I think that's something that's real black and white, and I think it's fair, and that's the way I'd like to approach this.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
My idea about this, today's, tonight's commission, the study session, is to first establish a few facts. For example, the short-term lodging units is a commercial use, and whether it's defined by our code, or we can change the definition of the code to make it a commercial... I think the city council's resolution already did that. And then we decide the compatibility between this use and our residential zone and other zones. My idea about that compatibility is that we should be, we should allow those uses in all residential zones, but with tight regulation, similar to what we, how we regulate home occupation business, second unit, and bed and breakfast to a lesser extent. And then, it's always a balance between how we, how much we want to protect the quality of life of our residents and the long-term economic vitality of this city. And beyond the concern of the city, and there's a statewide concern from California Coastal Commission to provide the public access to the coastal amenities. So it will have to be a balanced approach in between these two ends.
Okay, thank you. That, Adam, Attamian, are you ready to present some thoughts to us from staff?
Thank you, Chair Brown. I appreciate your comments so far this evening, so hopefully I'm going to make this go a little more streamlined. Let's see, we've done a couple of things in a different order, so I'm going to go through a few of these first few slides quickly. I did want to cover two things, what the city council has already done, so those are things that we don't need to discuss in terms of regulations, and then what we're specifically charged with. The ordinance that was passed last week, it requires short-term lodging units to obtain a new short-term lodging unit permit. It's basically put a cap on new STLUs based on people that had a permit as of last Tuesday evening, specifies taxes and penalties associated with the STLU permit, requires STLUs to utilize onsite parking, and it requires HOA approval for the permit to be issued. It limits occupancy based on bedroom count, so there is an occupancy limit based on bedrooms, but there isn't a total renter occupancy limit. Requires a 24-hour emergency contact. It also requires notification to neighbors, and it prohibits special events or parties. So these are things that have been already regulated pending effectiveness, March 15th. And then we have what council has asked the Planning Commission to study and make recommendations on. The first one is grandfathering or amortization of existing uses that are potentially going to be made non-conforming by any actions. The second one is any owner occupancy requirements for STLUs. The third is the, and probably the most important, in the purview of the Planning Commission, is the residential zoning where these uses are allowed. The fourth would be rental limitations, meaning limiting how many, how much property could be rented short-term per year. The fifth is capping the permits to, as a density limitation, or, yeah, you know, I have that written twice, but the next one is really the clustering. They mentioned that. And then the last one is looking at best practice policies from other cities. As we go through this tonight, I'll discuss the best practice policies from other cities. So for the standards where we found that other cities have regulated this use in a similar fashion, I'll bring that up. Part of the discussion was the rationale behind it. That can be a little bit more difficult to find in other cities. If it's not discussed in, you know, an agenda report, then we don't really have, you know, there's not great information on exactly why they went in any particular direction other than, you know, the obvious, that they're looking at certain problems and trying to regulate specific issues. So, so the first topic that I want to cover, and before I do that, I'm going to hand out, this is a matrix of, that is basically the same matrix that was put in the agenda packet. It's just turned to the side. I'm going to hand this out if you can pass those out. But I flipped it on its side, so it's all on one page. It goes over all of the standards that we're going to be discussing here tonight, and it's basically a way for you to take notes as we go along. What I'd like to do is collect these afterwards, and that way, there's, we're going to be discussing so many different things, and I want to make sure I have an accurate record of the direction that Planning Commission is looking to go. So the first topic that I'd like to discuss is zoning, and as the Assistant City Attorney has noted, there's a certain format that we're going to go through this in, and Mal, if I get off course, just correct me. The first question, which a lot of you have actually addressed in your statement so far, is where these should potentially be regulated in terms of zones? And so the ultimate question to start off with is, are we looking at an across-the-board regulation in terms of zoning, or are we going to look at dialing this into specific zones? So the first couple of questions here are, you know, is the commission comfortable with looking at either prohibiting this in all zones, allowing it in all zones, or allowing it as home sharing in all zones? And if none of those are a direction that the commission is looking to go, then we'll go into specific zones.
Okay, I'm looking at lights. Mr. Commissioner Smith's on first, I think, followed by Commissioner Wood.
Well, I was going to ask for clarification when you, when you talk about prohibit all zones. Are we prohibiting all of the zones, including neighborhood commercial, mixed use, CRC, CC, community? Is that...
This is, this is referring to zones that have residential uses.
So what you're referring to is prohibit in all our zones? Is that more likely?
Yes.
Okay. And, well, I just want to see that as a clarification.
Mr. Wood.
I see some, in one of our material, we explained why the R1 zone is preferred. It's a hot topic about R1, but not much has been mentioned about RM and our high-density residential zone. I offer some contrarian thought on that. Imagine you have a range, like a range in Texas. You can do commercial hunting there, and once you go from there, you go to rural parcel, you go to estate parcel, which in our city is about 20 acres a minimum. You can accommodate a lot of use there without impacting your neighbors. And when you go tighter and tighter through that continuum of the density, and you go through the R low-density zone, the medium-density, eventually you go to apartment or even high-rise condominium. People are packed, people are compacted more, and therefore, there's more potential for conflict and attrition, and therefore, more, the tighter regulation is needed. The buildings are designed to absorb those negative effect, but that's a result of that. It's not the reason that we should allow a business using residential zone because those buildings are designed to resist, to absorb them. Apartment building are not designed to accommodate daily cleaning staff, food delivery, and those activities are typically associated with lodging uses. So my idea is we should treat all residential zone the same way, instead of a single R1 zone or R2 zone out and give them special protection. And then, on mixed-use zones, I think they should be allowed because the essence of mixed-use zone is to put residential and commercial zone together for the synergy of them. So, thank you.
Let me chime in here briefly as we work through this. We have this particular grid that we've been presented. We have to be careful with... Do you have a copy of it, Mal? Because option three, we started getting into mixed-use areas where I have to be careful where I have to recuse, so keep everybody, we need to kind of keep heads up. I'm approaching this with the start of our general plan, which is the law of our city, which we spent four years on, and three of us spent about four years on it. And I asked, that's why Adam included the land use and residential use, coastal pier bowl, all those specific extracts from our general plan were provided in our briefing. And as I look through those key words of the residential areas, the mixed-use high-low, the pier bowl area, North Beach, and I look at the words of the general plan, and as they flow to the zoning ordinance, which we're in work now, and I look, that's our law. We have adopted it. I would, and I look at those words, it falls out to me that the short-term limit, units should not be permitted in the R-low, medium, or medium-high, but should be allowed in the pier bowl area where there's tourist, tourist words in there. It should be allowed in the R-medium and R-high areas, because that's where the, where the areas that we talk about can be, the words are there that tourists are allowed or appreciated or accommodated in. And so the words are there in our general plan. I looked at the coastal element, and I didn't see a lot of visitor-serving words in there. I looked at our tourism words in our general plan, and I asked that in there for tourism dollars and tourism efforts, and if I can find it. Unlike many other beach communities, San Clemente's character and identity are not Unlike many other beach communities, San Comeney's character and identity are not based on tourism. Rather, San Comeney strives to excel as a well-balanced community that welcomes visitors. We recognize that beaches and cultural and historic resources and businesses enhance both the residents' quality of life and tourist enjoyment and experiences, but we recognize that tourism is associated with costs and benefits. So our goal there is a balance between summer and winter. We, it's kind of there, we acknowledge it, we appreciate it, we support it, we tax ourselves to keep our pier fixed, we won't tax ourselves to put sand on the beach. But it's a kept-in-balance type thing. And that's the words right out of our tourism up front. And if you look at all, some of the other sections of our general plan, pier bowl, focus area, other areas, visitor-serving, Delmar, visitor-serving, and everything else, those are the words that I'm using here. The mixed-used areas, zones are vital for pedestrian activities for residents and retail. So I think mixed-use, we need to look at more closely. There are certain mixed-use areas in the T-zone area or the pier bowl area that are visitor-serving, and the words are there from our ordinance, our law, to support. Whereas in some other mixed-use areas in the hinterlands, those words are not really there, the 5.1 area in South El Camino Real. And so my approach is coming from our law and our land use, which is what we're about. And that's kind of my take on it as I read the goals of our general plan, and as I look at the appropriate words in the zoning ordinance, just as we've had the discussions between Commissioner Crandall and Assistant City Attorney about if it's not there, it's prohibited, that's true, but there's an implied, it's because of the TOT. But we're not in the land use, we're in the land use business, we're not in the tax collection business, we're not in the economic balance business. You know, there's other people that do that in the city. We're land use, that's our charter. So that's where I'm coming from, and the basis I'm coming from is our law that we have established and that we passed. And then many of you in this audience came up in over just three, four years and talked to us about it, little plots of land down on the west side of town, here and there, whatever. So that's my view based on the law. Mr. Eagles.
I absolutely agree with you that we need to take a look at our general plan. That's the law. That's really our, the basis of the fundamental land use that we're talking about here. And as I've said, I've been in town since 1984. I've seen a lot of things happen here. I live in a residential medium just outside of the pier bowl. We do have vacation rentals. I'm probably more accommodating than a lot of people are with regard to vacation rentals in those types of areas. And each neighborhood is really different, really is very different. I don't see how we can just say we can treat everything the same, because neighborhoods have different characteristics. My neighborhood has single families in it, condos, apartments, and so it has a whole variety of different types of uses. And in the, outside of my area, in the pier bowl, it's a lot more dense. There's a higher occupancy in there. There's some hotels, there's timeshares, there's also residential. There's a lot of vacation rentals in the pier bowl. In North Beach, it's similar, except it doesn't have hotels there. You have, in North Beach, you have some single families, you've got condos, condominiums, you've got apartments. In Southwest, and in, you have single families. Single-family neighborhoods are very different from the area that I live in, very different. They have different characteristics, and that's why I think it's important not to treat all the same, because they are different. And when they are different, you have to treat them a little differently. So my take in this, I don't really agree with any of those options there. I feel that they belong in higher-density areas. I do not believe they belong in R1 neighborhoods. I do, however, believe that in home exchanges, you have home sharing there, if someone goes on vacation, that they should be allowed to, in fact, rent their house out in all areas. But that has to be tightly regulated, because all of a sudden, they might become vacation rentals if you do it for an extended period of time, so there has to be some limitations in that. But I strongly believe that home exchanges in all areas should be allowed. I do not believe vacation rentals otherwise should be allowed in R1 areas. And I do, and I strongly believe that they should be allowed in the area that I live in and even more high-density areas. Do we have issues with them in my area? Of course we do. But hopefully, the TOT, which we're not tasked with this evening, will take care of that, hopefully. Hopefully, it has teeth in it that will take care of it. And there's some wonderful people in my neighborhood that have vacation rentals and manage them beautifully. There are others, not so well. But that's my take on topic number one, zoning.
Commissioner Wu.
Well, I agree with, I agree with you, Wayne, that these different neighborhoods definitely have different characteristics. There's a different feel, there's a different, you know, sense of them, but I think that there's a lot of similarities too. As you know, I feel that there are, I feel like we should treat these residential zones equally, because whether you're living in an apartment, or a single-family home, or a condo, or what have you, you still have to get a good night's sleep, you've got to get up for work the next morning, you might have kids that you're dealing with. I would even assert that in a higher-density zone between like what we have west of the five, between the pier bowl and North Beach, we have a situation where, in that higher-density, you could be affected more greatly by a STLU as your neighbor or close by, because there's simply more people there. There's more opportunity to hear the noise and, you know, experience the kinds of problems that might be experienced. So as a resident, I haven't heard yet any arguments that have convinced me that the people in a low-density zone should have some protection that the people in the high-density, higher-density zones should have. And conversely, I've heard an argument that says if someone has, for instance, a single-family home near North Beach, and there are a number of them, that that person shouldn't be allowed to provide that as a short-term rental, if the guy across the street in an apartment can do it there. So there's, you know, this, as Don was saying, there's what the general plan says and about the quality of life we have in the city, that we're focused on being a residential city. I think that we have to protect it, protect the residential zones roughly equally. Doesn't mean that there are different flavors, or might be other certain zones where parking has more needs than other zones, and we'll have to tweak it for the various zones. But in terms of the big questions, you know, allowing it or not allowing it, you know, all residences should be allowed, or all residences should not be allowed. Commercial and mixed-use are a little different. If we're going to say that, well, whether you say that STLUs are residential use or a commercial use, well, in mixed-use, you get to do either one. So it'd kind of be unfair to say that you can't do it in a mixed-use. At least, most of the mixed-use, I think that there's one we've got, you know, some question with, given the way it was laid out in the general plan. Similarly with commercial, since this, to me, appears to be a commercial, more a type of commercial use. So I am, you know, given what's in our general plan, I actually am not resistant to prohibiting it in all zones, but I do understand, you know, the property rates and some needs, we might need to do that in some zones. I think, as Commissioner Wu was stating, that it might be, the answer there might be to allow it with basically an incompatible use. If it's an incompatible use, we would allow it in, you know, particular circumstances with a particular density, to keep the impact to the residences, to the actually, the defined use for that particular zone, keeping, making sure that that was preserved. If we can do that, then maybe it's appropriate. If we can't do that, then it might not be appropriate in those zones. Your notion about visitor-serving, I think, is intriguing. I still struggle with it a bit, because there are still residences there that, you know, might have need those same protections. I guess one of the rubs in there is what exactly are those zones? When I looked at those zones in the general plan, the, in North Beach, it's a very small zone. I believe it only incorporates about a half a dozen residential properties. Mostly, it's the triangle area and, you know, the casino and right in that very specific area. And of course, the pier bowl is a much larger area, incorporates much more residences, but it has those hotels, which kind of complicates the whole issue. So I think, you know, like I said, I'm conflicted about that, I'm struggling with it. I think it's worth some real nitty-gritty discussion to figure, to figure out if it's appropriate in those residential zones because of the visitor-serving nature, if it's, we focus on very specifically what was defined in the general plan. So that's where I am with, so far, with the.
For the record, you live up in the North Beach area, so.
Yes, I live in the North Beach area.
We understand that.
And you live in a, and you live in a single-family home, so we understand that.
We all recognize that. Okay. I guess you want to get back, some answers back from us, because we're kind of struggling with this grid, so.
He's still presenting.
He's still presenting.
He's asking for.
First question. Are we looking at a across-the-board discussion, or are we going to start piling down to zones? So far, it sounds to me like.
We'll get a straw vote here. You, you want a straw vote?
I have some extra thought.
Okay, certainly. Oh, I'm sorry, you got the lights on.
I think Commissioner Smith may want to speak too. I'd like to point out the danger of allowing residential high-density, at the same time, disallow them in residential low-density, because of the concern about our working-class housing and affordable housing. Short-term lodging units will take out small portion of our housing inventory. Eventually, it will put pressure on the low end of these housing products, that is, of affordable housing. By allowing residential high district, by allowing them in residential high district, we put extra pressure on our supply of affordable housing, because just imagine, you have this apartment building, this onsite management, in that occasion, if we allow them to do short-term rental unit, eventually, that apartment building may very likely, for example, the building right next to the pier bowl, it will become eventually 100% or substantially all-suite hotel, let me say it that way, that will substantially reduce the inventory of our affordable housing and the working-class housing. And that's one, that's a main concern about our housing supply. We don't concern much about our high-end residential product here. So that's that. The second thought is the mission statement of our city asks us to guide development to ensure responsible growth. I think perhaps there is a way we can create an overlay to include some mixed-use district as well as some area around North Beach or maybe Pier Bowl, to guide this development and leave them away, leave the most of the investment away from our residential district into those, whatever name we call it, tourist service or vacation renter district, so that the investment can go there, go into that district, and that will promote the city's tourism. And the final one is, my thought is, I read some materials, and the materials, this is a question for Mel. It mentioned that a city of Pismo and the city of Incanitas had their local coastal plan rejected by Coastal Commission because they had an outright ban of short-term lodging units in their coastal zone. As a result, they changed that. Are you aware of those situations?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I've been made aware of those situations. In fact, just about two hours ago, the chairman and I discussed that, so I'm going to take a look at that. I'm also aware of the Manhattan Beach issue that's also pending. The Coastal Commission is certainly looking very closely at what cities are doing with short-term lodging units. It's somewhat of an open question, but I am aware of the Pismo Beach situation, have not reviewed that extensively.
Well, if that causes any issue with the Coastal Commission, because the city is submitting our coastal land use to the Coastal Commission, and at the same time, if we ban them in low-residential district with Interstate 5, it will cause an inconsistency between our zoning and the coastal land use element.
But at the same token, if you allow in certain pier bowl tourist-serving areas that our general plan supports, then that should ameliorate, you know, modify that to some extent too.
Right, my point is, we're changing our zoning here, and that needs to be consistent with the coastal, coastal plan element of our general plan. Otherwise, we're putting our, into a position that.
We did get, you know, we did have a policy in the coastal element, or the LUP, I should say, and the city council removed it specifically because this issue has not been decided. And we were directed that at the time we ultimately arrive at what we want to do, that we would come back and update the LUP to match. We're also, as you know, there's the LUP, which is the kind of the more general plan version of the LCP, and in the IP, maybe, we're not even sure if we need to amend the LUP in order to accommodate whatever we decide to do, because we could put it in the IP. We'd have to have discussions with the Coastal Commission. And Commissioner Wu, I have been following the different cities, including the one I added to your packet from Solana Beach. Clearly, the Coastal Commission, their mantra is that these kinds of uses are something that is supported by the Coastal Act, and they have, in several cases, rejected cities' outright bans. So most likely, we would have to, if we wanted to get it approved through an LCP, accommodate some form of vacation, short-term vacation rentals within the whole code. I don't think that we would be restricted to allowing it across the board in all zones, as long as we provide a reasonable accommodation for them to exist in a reasonable number. I think that that would be fine. So I don't think you're restricted in requiring it to be in all zones. We would work with the Coastal Commission staff, and I know that in the areas that they have been rejected, the proposal for an outright ban, they've encouraged the community to come in and work with them to come up with a solution to address the community issues, because they do acknowledge the community issues with the vacation rentals.
Okay, let's, we've kind of gone back and forth here. Let's, okay.
I think that there's a, there's a real danger here about getting into these emotional issues. I mean, there's financial, should people be making this money? There's, well, some neighborhoods are better than others, and all of this stuff puts me on a really thin bed of ice, because we're getting very arbitrary about things like enforcement. These, these really aren't the things that we should be looking at. We should be looking at what we're supposed to be doing, and that is zoning and appropriateness of the zoning. And I really like what Chair Brown had to say. I think the way he said it is the way I feel about it, and I think if we're going to start changing the zoning as it now exists, that it's not just an arbitrary process up here of I think this is this and this. I think that's a very serious thing. And if we're going to go changing zoning, then we need, we need to be very specific about that and not just bat it around this group. The other thing that I'm having a problem with is this topic number one, allow is home sharing in all zones. I don't believe that this is home sharing. I don't believe that this is home sharing whatsoever. That's a misnomer. This is not home sharing. This is renting out a house for profit. And so I don't like the idea of this being softened by home sharing. It's clearly not. So I'd like to hang with Chair Brown about approaching this, and I think if we're going to take a longer look at this and maybe change some zoning, if we're worried about the Coastal Commission, then that's fine, but I think we should be very pragmatic and real smart about how we do that. And finally, I just want to say that if you look at the approved land uses in our general plan, this use is allowed in certain zones, and some of those zones are in the coastal zone. So we're already good with some of this, where it is. And I think we're getting pretty emotional, and we're getting a little worried about this and that and everything else, but I think we ought to go back to what we've done and what the hard work has been done here and look at it, and if we're going to question it and change it, then we should be very, very careful about how we do it.
Thank you. I get more lights on, and I have to kind of hold it. That will do a little straw vote. Commissioner Ruin wants to come back for a second, buy the apple, and then Commissioner Crandall, and then we'll hold it, and we'll do a vote here.
Well, the apple, the apple grows when people speak, so it's true that we do have something to be, you know, some concern with the Coastal Commission in terms of what's available in the coastal area, but we're also between a rock and a hard place there because we also have our housing element. So they're actually, you know, somewhat contradictory to each other in certain ways in this area, and that's something that we might have to find ourselves digging into. One thing that I think we should be a little careful about is saying, well, we need more hotels in our community. That might be true, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're supposed to carve them out of residential areas. You know, hotels are in commercial areas and visitor-serving areas, so we should be sensitive to that as well. One thing to remember as we're talking about where we allow it and where we don't allow it is the TOT. I mean, what the TOT is and such, it's not our purview, that's city councils. But if we restrict this to certain zones, that means that there will be areas where there are residential people, people in residential areas, who are, you know, who have the burden of having vacation rentals near them and any issues that arise from them. But the taxes that are collected from that go to the city as a whole. So there's, you know, if you're in a commercial, a commercial area is a little different because that's sort of the design of it. But when you're in a residential area, you're collecting, you know, some people have the burden, but they don't necessarily get the benefit either through taxes or through some other means. So I think that's something that we need to bear in mind as well when we're looking at how equitable these things are. I think we talked about a straw vote on this particular issue, prohibit in all zones or allow in all zones. That's a huge question, and I think that we've got a lot of detail, other detail to talk about before we can answer that question, in my opinion. I would be uncomfortable with making that sweeping judgment now before we've had more discussion on some of these other issues. I would propose it, though, that we could perhaps take a straw vote, might be in a place where we can say, should we be consistent, whatever our decision is, should be, would be roughly consistent across residential zones in the way we handle it, whether we, and then leave it where, whether we are prohibiting it or allowing it in all those zones after we've had a chance to talk about some of these other issues.
I think land use is our mantra, that's our charter, and we have to, we have to make the hard decisions upfront. So I would disagree if let's go down and look at rental day limitations and quiet hours. Some of that stuff will fall out fairly early. I think we should, you know, take, walk up to the problem and try to solve the hard issue here, which is land use. Mr. Crandall?
Just real quick, there's one option we haven't talked about is just interpreting the code the way it's written, which says it would not be in residential zones, it wouldn't require a zone change, it just would require applying the code the way it's written. And I don't want anybody to lose sight of that, but I would like to explore all the options of the zone.
It's an option for prohibiting in all zones, they're talking about-
But everybody keeps talking about a zone change and worrying about the-
We're not here to-
The land use plan and all, leaving it the same, doesn't change anything. We aren't rezoning anything.
We're basically trying to figure out to allow a use or not in an existing zone. We're not here, in my understanding, to rezone. That's not the object here. Is that, correct me if I'm wrong, what do we recommend to the council here, staff?
So-
Zoning is a kind of a blunt tool. It's not a real fine scalpel that you use on a surgeon's table that says, you know, work your way up and down various lot lines and then down the middle of the street and across the ballpark here.
Yeah, so there's a number of opportunities here. The first is to, you know, to acknowledge that vacation rentals are, they're not specified in the code, but that's, there's really an ambiguity that exists in the code about short-term versus long-term rentals. You know, there's an argument, you could make an argument pretty much either way.
Where does that ambiguity exist?
Yeah, I want to.
In the code?
Well, so it talks about things that are allowed in residential zones. One of those things is a single-family dwelling. You know, it doesn't talk about length of rental. You know, that's a different, that's a different thing than, you know, if you rent a house out for a month or you rent it out for a couple of weeks, I think you could have an argument that it's not clear in the code that it's specifically prohibited.
You know, I just don't read the code that way.
No, I don't either.
Well, that's another option. I mean, that's another thing, is you say-
No.
Okay, so there's another, there's another option, and that is to look at the code and say, this is a lodging. And if it's lodging and the code specifies what lodging is allowed, and none of it's allowed in the, you know, west of the five, then you could say that, you know, it should be prohibited. You know, a very, very simple solution to prohibiting these uses would just be to simply clarify what a vacation rental is with a definition and say, this is a lodging use. You know, it's-
Adam, I'm taking a look here at our zone, zoning, and under 17.32.030, residential use regulations, B, prohibited uses, and it says the following uses are prohibited. And then below it, it says in asterisks, it says vacation rentals are excluded from this table and therefore are prohibited use in a residential property unless found to be similar to a permitted or conditionally permitted use. It says it right there. You know, it's, I think, and then it says, the only permitted low-density residential zone lodging use similar to vacation rentals are bed and breakfast inns. Bed and breakfast inns are explicitly stated in section 17.28.0904, are prohibited on lots zoned residential low and residential very low, C-word of Interstate 5 in areas governed by specific plans. It says it right there.
Yes.
And then, of course, then we have our TOT, our business license, which is chapter 3.24, and then it talks about vacation rentals. But in our zoning, I think it's really pretty clear. It's clear.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to, I agree, Don, I think we need to go back to what it says now-
Right.
And then take it from there. But I don't think there should be any question here-
We're dealing with it here now. We're dealing with the general plan now and the zoning order now.
Why don't we get a straw vote on now?
Well, before we do that, you know, the Assistant City Attorney addressed this issue early on. You know, the city has basically allowed these uses to exist by issuing vacation rental permits and then collecting tax on them. Now, I think something needs to be done to at least clarify this, but to just simply look at the code and say-
But we're not in the business of clarifying the business, the city's business issues in that part of the code. That's not our charter. We're, our code is chapter 17. That's chapter three. That's where you do the business side of the city. There's a legal thing of some implied allowed use, but-
Huh? Yeah, for the uses.
But, you know, we're dealing with the general plan we own now, the zoning ordinance we own now, and that's what we're, we're dealing with what is, is. I mean, you know, it's-
Okay, well, what the city council asks that we do is evaluate these uses in a number of different ways, and one is to make recommendations on specific zoning-related questions. Now, if the answer is simply, we've looked at the code and we just don't think these are allowed uses in any residential zone.
That's not what it says. That's not what it says. It says are prohibited in lots zoned RL and RBL.
For bed and breakfast.
But that's the, but that's what it says, similar to a permitted or conditionally permitted use, and the only permitted low-density residential zone lodging, and that refers to bed and breakfasts.
Yes.
So that's, you know, it folds it into the bed and breakfast definition here. I mean, that's what it says right here, right now.
We can interpret the code as we want, but we're not going to reinterpret out of the quagmire we have. The city has permitted these uses, and that caused a conflict between that practice and the zoning law. So we're here to, if we need to, we're here to talk about rewriting the regulation. If we need to change some of the zoning, we can recommend the city council to change it.
Well, if, depending upon, first of all-
That's right. Okay, let's-
And I'd like to, I'd like to just refer back to this as the straw vote should be to reaffirm 17.32.030 as it states with regard to vacation rentals. That's what it says.
So, but that, that's true. It's not the only thing, well, zoning doesn't say anything about allowing in residential medium and high, which would mean that it's-
No, that's right.
Not a permissible use.
That's right. I'm referring specifically to RL and RBL.
So if we want to just render an opinion about the current zoning ordinance, I think that that's, we, the straw vote would say that it would be in the current zoning ordinance, this is our observation or our finding, but I'm, where does that get us? That doesn't get us out of this, out of this quagmire, as Commissioner Wu stated.
It sets a basis and a foundation from where we should go from here.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
It says they are allowing RBL and RL, well, B and B are allowed with five or less units, are allowing RBL and RL with the CUP, then for any higher-density residential district, they are allowed with a minus UP.
But that's not allowed west of the five.
That's what it says.
Right, that's for B and B. That's not allowed west of Interstate 5.
Correct. So what I think we should do here is-
You know, before, just to clarify, the term vacation rental is not identified in the zoning ordinance. The letter that you're referring to says that there's, you know, quotes the municipal code saying that it's a permissive zoning ordinance, meaning if it's not listed, it's not allowed unless it's determined that it's similar to a listed use. Bed and breakfasts, you know, it could be the case that this is not, this is not very similar to a bed and breakfast, and then it's just-
That's what it says here, but-
But that's a, that's a letter that you're reading from somebody.
That's not a letter, it's the zoning code.
Well, I'm looking at the zoning code right now, and it under prohibited uses-
Is it a letter that, okay.
I mean, the letter makes a solid argument in how to look at this.
It's a clarification.
Yes. But it's, it's making an argument that they're most like bed and breakfasts, and therefore, you know, these shouldn't be allowed in residential low, residential very low zones. There is another option, and that's, these are not like bed and breakfasts. Bed and breakfasts are basically a home share. I mean, they have, well, because you have somebody on site that's managing it. A vacation rental is where nobody's on-site renting, managing it.
Not necessarily.
And so part, you know, in city council-
Not necessarily.
And, well, in previous planning commission meetings, we've discussed, you know, the issue of onsite management. You know, we're going to talk about owner occupancy requirements. So I'm just saying that there's more options there than to just say that it's like bed and breakfast and, you know, it should be regulated.
So what is the definition of a short-term rental unit in the new ordinance that the city council just passed last week?
It's in chapter 3.24.
And it states-
Could you bring it up for, maybe Jimmy could bring it up for us? If it's new, it may not all be familiar with it. While they're bringing that up, let's-
You know, this is a, it's a pretty simple definition, I'll just read it. An STLU means short-term lodging unit other than a hotel, as those terms are defined by this section. And a hotel is basically any building or structure that has five or more short-term lodging units in it.
Well, that's, I think, yeah. I think, you know, Bart brought up early on that one thing he wanted to get some movement on was what are STLU's compatible with? And I think maybe, because, you know, we, maybe you're getting a little in the weeds, maybe we want to look at that, and in order to look at that, we have to understand what the definition of STLU is. I think the definition you gave us, that the city council gave us, or that we got from city council, is a little, it's a little tough to work with, saying it's not a hotel and a hotel is just anything of six or more units. I don't, maybe, let me ask Mel, regarding hotels, Mel, is that a, is that a common definition or a useful definition in your experience, in terms of dealing with legal and zoning issues?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it depends. That's a lawyer's answer for you. But you see different definitions based on where in the municipal code they're located. Typically, your TOT definition's going to be different from your zoning definition, and you're, you know, here, your Title III regulatory definition will often be different from your zoning definition. What was read is a typical Title III regulatory definition, but I'll tell you, when it comes to zoning ordinances, the hotel definition, they can be very, very different. There are some jurisdictions that define hotel extremely broadly as your classic hotel with six or more rooms, with guest services, with a lobby, and then also as, including vacation rentals. There are some jurisdictions like ours, which currently defines hotels only as your classic hotel, so it really differs from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I will also note that how hotel is defined really drives what cities can and can't do with regard to existing STLU's, right? If a hotel is defined broadly and it's banned in residential areas, right, and it's defined as including potentially vacation rental-type uses, then you can hang your hat on that. If however, as in San Clemente currently, it's defined very narrowly, then you can't hang your hat on hotels being banned residential because a hotel in that instance, or in our instance currently, is really a Holiday Inn, a Motel 6, your typical hotel.
So, thank you. So I'm wondering if, oh, yeah, sorry, Jim.
And just to, in order to kind of move this discussion on, what we have here is a little bit of a stalemate between the group.
I don't know if we have a stalemate or not, we have to take the straw vote.
Okay, well, then maybe we should try and take the straw vote. And some of the things that you're questioning and the solutions in the other parts of the ordinance, for example, someone brought up, I think Commissioner Wu brought up, the issue of, you know, well, how do we prevent the affordable housing stock from being overrun by vacation rentals? Well, one way to do that is the cap of the density.
Right.
So some of the other, some of the other things that we're going to look at are going to be part of the solution.
We need to bound the cost.
And also, I think we shouldn't get too hung up on the existing ordinance and what the code says. We're here to find a solution for vacation rentals. Clearly, there's different ways to interpret the code. So I think that, let's go ahead and move forward with at least a straw vote to the degree we can provide the staff with any direction. We can also come back around to this once we've discussed all the other issues.
Well, I'm just a little concerned that if we're, if we're taking a straw vote that says, you know, we're doing this or that, you know, with an STLU, and we haven't really defined what an STLU is, are we talking about just what we have today? Are we talking with something that's less dense, less dense or more dense? You know, we're not, we're not sure what we're voting on.
It's not proposed, I don't think you can use that word.
All right. No, you know, I think, you know, with an STLU, we've got a fairly good definition, I think, to deal with right now. We're trying to make sure we have a land use that's compatible, and so let's- And so let's, I think, to provide staff, let's take these straw votes. And if you have a concern about it, then vote no. And we have to, you know, do the hard right instead of the easy wrong, and start making some decisions here, or we're just going to be vacation in jail forever. We can iterate this stuff forever. The home element, it's home element, we've dealt with it, it's going on, we have to adjust that. You don't need to make it an overriding concern. We have to acknowledge coastal commission realities here. We have to be a little pragmatic. We have to look at, but we have to get within the bounds of the law we're about. And so we can iterate this stuff forever. Zoning ordinances are not fine, they're blunt object tools, they're not fine tools, like I said before. So I think we should go on and do a straw vote, provide staff. Now, home sharing to me is just, I want to take my house and swap with it, is that what your definition is? Is share it with somebody else for a period of time? What is the definition?
No. A home share is when the manager of the STLU or the owner is present, or is residing in the house while they're renting out part of it. A home exchange is basically that.
Your deal with home sharing is there is, the owner's on-site at all times?
Yes.
That's your definition?
Yeah.
Okay. So I propose a straw vote on for options. Number one, who's in favor of prohibiting in all zones?
Prohibiting of STLU's in all zones.
In all zones, every zone.
Huh? In all zones.
But an STLU can include someone who lives on-site?
This wouldn't, this would be in zones that have residential. So it would be residential and mixed-use zones.
This is all zones in the city, right?
You're talking about all zones.
Well, in a commercial zone, they're going to be called hotels. I mean, any of these uses in a commercial zone is going to require a conditional use permit.
I mean, I'm trying to give you feedback based on the chart that's on the screen here.
Yes.
Do we prohibit STLU, short-term lodging units, which is a rental of, you know, whatever, under 29, or 29 days or less, in all zones of the city? That's what this chart tells me. I'm trying to get a straw vote on.
Let's just say in residential and mixed-use zones.
Residential and mixed-use.
That's not what this, that's not what the chart says.
This is not what the chart says.
It's allowed in MU 4.3 here. That's the mixed-use.
Mr. Petches, what do you want this commission to do to provide feedback?
What we're trying to do is get directions so we can come back and draft an ordinance.
Right.
So the zones that we specifically asked to evaluate are, include the mixed-use zone and the medium-density residential, and then the low, or single-family residential.
If I expand this chart then, to this chart.
And the high-density residential. So it's four zones.
Okay, so...
These questions are not directly related to the chart. These are, this is just a general question of, do we want to, you know, create an ordinance where we're basically treating all areas where residences are equally?
May I speak, Adam?
We'll get to the specific zones if there is not consensus to regulate this.
Hold on a sec. Okay, so we're doing two things here. This is meant to be sort of a, just get a consensus, right? This right here, you asked us to walk through and take note on, you were going to collect them.
Yes.
Okay, so I've done that. I've gone through each one of the things that you have here, and each of the options, and I picked all the ones I thought were neat and worked and everything. So I'm going to give this to you. Hopefully, you can take this and everybody else's and use that information. I think it's good with some modifications. I think it gets there about 85 percent. Really, it does. It hits all the issues. Whether or not you want to know from all of us if, you know, if I'm okay with prohibiting in all zones, or, I can do that, but this really tells the story right here. Whatever we write, whatever we select on this, tells the stories.
Yes.
And we can talk about that. That might be more effective than going round and round and each talk about the 13 columns and the three options and which one we like. We want to do that, we can do that, get into the record, we can do it that way. But either way, we have to address this.
Okay, so I have a question here. If we, we have three options here. If we don't like all the items that are in option one, but we like some of them, and we like some of the options in two, we can circle them as far as what we like. Okay. I'm not ready to do that this evening. I want to study this. And I'll give it to you, but I want to study it, because I don't think it's fair for us tonight, getting this tonight, in this format, and for you to tell us to do that this evening. I want to study, and I'll give it to you.
This would be a great forum to have individual discussions. Each commissioner can walk through, this is our, sort of our guidepost here, and with our notes, we can each walk through what we think is the right way to do this, based on this criteria, which is all really good and effective.
Mr. Jim, what do you...
Okay, I like that, because I think it'll, you know, stop the circular, you know, talking.
Right.
And giving Wayne the extra time, what we could do, if it's agreeable to the planning commission, is we could have each of you fill out your information, and give you a little bit of time to do it, so you don't have to do it tonight, and then we can tabulate it, and we can come back with, this item is scheduled for the 17th as a public hearing, and use that meeting to, staff will collate everybody's answers, and we will, then give each one of you an opportunity to speak, and then we can use that as a way to come to a consensus on what the staff should draft up. Is that okay?
No, not okay.
Okay, cool.
I would like to put a fourth option, which is, we will interpret this as it's laid out within the general plan. Specifically called out in here, what to do.
We could do a comparative.
But why not just say, live with the document?
We do it all the time with projects. We'll have what the development standard is and what is being proposed, and it's nice to have that side by side, because we can compare it. And it'd be a simple comparison, because, I mean, this is a bit of a departure. I mean, anything in any of these columns is, I mean, it's going to be, we are going to change the language of our ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Or we're not. And if we change it, there's going to be a lot of changes.
It's allowed in zones that aren't even on this option. That's my point.
And you could put an addendum with this?
Why can't I say option four is what's in the book?
You don't have to pick out of the three options, you can write your own options.
You can write your own options. Again, this is, was intended to be a consensus, sort of a broad-stroke consensus of where the commission stands right now.
Yes.
Okay, that's what this is for.
This document is, this is the same options that was laid out in the packet.
Yes. Just reform that.
Except it's like this.
Yeah, just reform that.
Yeah, I just turned it to the side.
Right.
Just so it's all on one page, it's a little easier to kind of follow. You know, this, I mean, we can, you know, go through each one of these. What I wanted to do was just get, answer one basic question, which was...
We can't do that tonight. You know, that's what we're going around and around and around on.
Let's have some, would it be valuable for at least to have Adam go through each one of the categories, just to explain what they are, and if you have any questions, you can ask him, so that we're all clear on what we're doing.
I guess straw vote, maybe. It's okay. Let's talk about each item and get the feeling of, you know, on each item, we want straw vote to, to inform.
I think Mike's idea was a better idea, as far as studying this a little bit more. Do you want to go through this matrix very briefly that staff has then, at least, and then work, this is an assignment that's due to staff. When do you want it? Tonight? Well, you've already...
Yeah, I'd like to get as much input from staff as possible, as far as...
Yeah.
Chair Brown, can I just make one last comment about an important point that legal made, and that was that our definition is not fitting what we're doing here, in my opinion. And we have, we have two sorts of definitions, and I think if we can tailor our definition of what a hotel is, going back to the last meeting we had, I read something to everybody, it was a definition, which was pretty consistent with many that I've seen, especially in jurisdictions that are going through this now, and most recently, one coastal community. And I'd be happy to read it again, but I think if we, if we can all come together on what it is we're talking about, it might help us a little bit when we're making these decisions here.
Can you read your hotel?
Okay. The definition I read last meeting was that, it reads that a building, group of buildings, or a portion of a building which is designed for or occupied as a temporary abiding place of individuals for less than 30 days, consecutive days, including but not limited to the establishment held as bed and breakfasts, ends, hostels, ends, motels, motor lodges, timeshare projects, tourist courts, and other similar uses. Those will all be defined as a hotel, a hotel use, non-residential.
So what?
Okay, well...
We're talking about something else here, we're not talking about it.
Well, the reason I think it's important is because we're talking about hotel, based on this, we are talking about a non-residential use in residential zones, and whether or not we want a non-residential use in residential zones. If the answer is yes, we're okay with it. How do we do it in such a way that creates that balance and maintains that integrity, that vision of the neighborhood that our founding father had, and what the definition of a neighborhood is relative to the term community?
So you're saying the short-term lodging units is a hotel? Is that what you're saying?
By this definition, absolutely. Just, an STLU comes in various different shapes and sizes and names. It's a temporary lodging based on this hotel.
Well, is that too broad of a definition of a hotel? Because you've just, you indicated earlier that there was a broad definition that got into trouble with the coastal commission and so forth.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it all depends on how the definition then is used in the zoning code, on what regulations and restrictions are placed in the zoning code. I think I know where that definition came from, because I've got it right in front of me. And that city that actually has that definition, they've actually been successful with STLU's based on how that's been used in their zoning codes. It just depends, again, the definition's important, but it's only important insofar as it drives the rest of the zoning code, right? So if the purpose, for example, here, were to, and this is just hypothetical, were to ban all STLU's in residential areas, you could use that definition and just say hotels are banned residentially, right? Because that definition would include STLU's, boarding houses, et cetera. Again, it depends on how it's used in the zoning ordinance.
So you're comfortable with that definition?
Depending, again, on what the planning commission does with its recommendations, on how it's used. I know in the city, if this is where I think it comes from, that has used this definition, they've been successful with regulation of STLU's.
And in your opinion, it sounds like this to me, but I wanted to get your opinion, would this definition cover the case when someone is renting just a single room or even just a couch in their hotel, in their living room?
A hotel.
In other words, in other words, that's a hotel. I'm renting a couch to somebody, to somebody for 50 bucks, because that's what people do on Airbnb and places like that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the operative language is, and other similar uses. This is a pretty broad definition, if, what was read is a pretty broad definition.
What would be suitable for the purpose? Could be considered suitable.
If that were the purpose, the commission...
If we allow this use, we can continue to restrict the intensity of this use in each zone, and then we can talk about the details, zone by zone.
Sure.
I think that the definite, what we need to do is to decide what we want to allow. I think that we all know that an STLU is different than a hotel. Now, if you want to prohibit it, then it's good to throw it like the city that we're talking about. They put it in with hotel, because they considered it lodging, and they wanted to keep the lodging in commercial areas, and that way, it was a prohibition for all residential areas for that kind of a use. If you want to allow it on a limited basis, then you wouldn't include it in a definition of a hotel. You create its own definition and make it as compatible as possible to the residential uses where it would be allowed. But it just depends on the approach you want to take, and the definition will follow. We'll write the definition to meet the approach.
Right. That's what I was trying to get at earlier, is you start with the zoning, and then the definitions will fall out there. You're trying to say, get the definition up front.
Well, I'm just saying, if we have that in place and take away the specifics, like six or more units or whatever, we start to have something we can work with more effectively. And then we could look at the use by zone. So you have a STLU or hotel use in a non-residential zone, it could be permitted with more flexibility than one would be in a residential zone. So, you know, somebody comes up, we have a certain density in mind or cap, we have a certain number percentage that we've established as appropriate for residential zones based on the density, then we can permit it with special conditions. So it's allowed in all zones, except in residential zones, it's subject to certain conditions that would better regulate and control the use, so that you can achieve that balance in those more sensitive zones. That's a rough draft, but that's really what I was thinking.
City planner, what's your view on that?
I think I already gave my opinion. I think you need to give us direction on what you want to allow, where.
Yeah.
And then we do the definition. We, when you group it with hotel, you're calling it a lodging use. If you're calling it a lodging use, it probably doesn't belong in a residential zone. The codes that I've seen in, like in San Luis Obispo where they allow it, they call, they allow it under the condition where you have to live in the unit, and they call it a homestay. And that homestay is a different definition than the hotel use. A hotel use would not be allowed in a residential zone. So I think, from my approach anyway, that it would be easier for us to understand whether you want to allow it in residential zones at all. That's why we had that first question there. If you don't want to allow it, that makes it really easy for us, we'll call it a lodging use, and we'll define it in hotel. If you want to allow it on a limited basis, then we start looking at carving out a special definition.
That's the original slide you had up?
Yeah, it was the original Adam's slide that we had up.
It was like, to me, it didn't say residential only in the title, so it was like the whole city.
It didn't. It was residential and mixed-use, because when we first outlined all the uses, that's what we're talking about.
Go back one slide if you could.
Well, this is what, this is what he really wants us to...
To me, to me...
Yeah, now it's up there.
To me, this falls out fairly simple from a land use basis from our general plan. I go back to where we started, that's what we're in the business for. And I look at the chapters of our general plan, this is not a permitted use in a residential zone for residential low or, you know, and very low or medium-low. To me, when I looked at our general plan, and the words in the general plan, it works in the pier bowl, it works in the T-zone area, in the mixed-use area, it works in the residential medium and high with the words that are contained presently in the general plan and in the zoning ordinance. So I would say, don't allow it in residential, R1, 2, 3, R very low, R low, R medium low, allow it in RM and H, in certain mixed-use zones. And then we'd work through the clustering, or the density, or the parking, whatever. I mean, parking's kind of already addressed in the city council, but the TOT ordinance, maybe the refutation. And we, the trash stuff and all this other stuff kind of falls out. To me, land use is what we're about. The law is the law, and that law is our general plan. And that's what we, that's what we're chartered to do. And the words in the current general plan lead us in that direction. And you can iterate the what ifs of the housing element, or this or that, it's a little , but it does nod to the coastal commission and coastal serving areas, and so it acknowledges that areas, but goes back and preserves the residential, you know, low areas for family orientation, which are the words in the general plan. That's, if I was to take a vote tonight, that's the way I'd vote. Is that the straw vote that you want us to do tonight?
I would support a straw vote, because there are three options there, somebody may come up with a fourth option. At least that allow us to narrow down, maybe to two options. If we can find one option with a majority to support, then that's the option. At least we can narrow it down.
Okay. I propose a straw vote, that we don't allow it in RL, RBL, RH, and we do allow it in residential medium and high, and selected mixed-use zones that are presented on the chart. All in favor, raise your hand. Say that once again. We don't allow it in our...
Chair, are you changing the options a little bit?
Are you changing the options? Should we, or should we do these options? You want this option? Okay. All right, so option one. Who's in favor of option one?
He can't talk on mixed use.
Okay. I just want...
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if it's being discussed in the context of the entire city, then it's okay.
Yeah.
So right now, the discussion is what's being allowed citywide, and at that point, everybody's qualified.
Okay. So you want to vote here on these options here?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, for a straw vote, for option one, who's in favor of allowing in all residential zones and mixed-use zones? We have three.
And I'm going to put a caveat on that, because we still haven't identified what this looks like in a residential zone. It could still, if we do it wrong, it'll still negatively affect the neighborhood character.
Well, this is general, broad stroke, tweaking buffers, densities, considering density.
So you can't vote for option one?
This is general.
That means all Rs.
That means all residential zones.
Yeah.
So would we be okay with it in all zones, subject to a lot of consideration?
No, that's not what this is about. I think, so the vote here is you, we won't allow STLUs in all residential zones and mixed-use zones. All in favor of that, raise your hand. A favor of all residential zones and mixed-use zones. We have three. All not in favor of that, raise your hand. So it's four, not, for option one, four against, three to allow it. You have it? What's that again now? Option one, three voted to allow all residential zones and mixed-use zones for STLUs. And four? Four voted against. No, okay. Now, for option two, allow in RM, RH, and all mixed-use zones. Who's in favor of allowing in RM, RH, and all mixed-use zones?
That means we're only allowing RM, RH, and all mixed-use, not allowing RA, RVA zone.
It's basically not allowing it in single-family zones.
Right. Okay. All in favor of option, show of hand, who's in favor of allowing in RM, RH, and all mixed-use zones? Raise your hand. Who's not in favor? One, two, three, four, five. So five vote against allowing in RM, RH, and all mixed-use zones. Now, allow only in MU 1, 2, I cannot vote, I'll have to recuse on this, I think. Is that correct?
No, you can vote on this. MU 3.2 is not included yet.
Okay. So allow only in mixed-use 1, 2, 3, 3.1, 3.3, and 4.1, within the coastal zone. Who's in favor of allowing this? All in favor.
In mixed use?
Allow only in mixed-use 1, 2, 3, 3.1, 3.3, and 4.1.
I'm in favor of allowing in mixed use.
Only.
It says only. It says only.
I know it says only.
The options here aren't good.
For us, it would be helpful if everybody was in favor of mixed use, so we'll do it for only, and then just mixed use in general, okay? So we get both.
So you want to vote once with allow only, and then...
Once for...
And then once just allow in.
Allow in, yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay, Chair Brown?
This will be useful to you somehow?
Yeah, because then at least, at least we'll have a zone that everybody thinks it's okay to be in.
The options are just, the options don't fall out from our general plan, so I don't know where it came from, you know? All right. Who's in favor? I'm sorry. You have some, I seek your counsel, because you're very experienced, having 25 years of taking notes for these meetings.
I was just going to ask if you would just vote on option three, because it's already identified as an option.
Yeah, okay, we're going to do that.
Then we'll do that.
Then we're going to do that. Okay, so who is in favor of option three? Allow only in mixed-use 1, 2, 3, 3.1, 3.3, and 4.1. Allow only. Who's in favor? Oh, who's not in favor? You didn't vote either way.
I didn't vote either way. I'm voting for the next one.
Okay, so that, that's it. Are you abstaining, or not voting against?
Yeah, I'm abstaining.
Okay, so do you have that right? Eileen? Nobody, okay. Nobody's in favor. Okay, so now, option four, I'm sorry, yes.
Can we, in this option, can we add NCC and CRC zones? Because they're not even in there, and they're in the general plan.
They're in option one.
They're basically in it, yeah.
But they're not parsed out, right?
Well, but then you've got all residential in it.
Let's just, let's go what we can feel and touch right now. Which option four is, what is the city plan's option here? Staff, come on. What was the city plan of option four?
Option four was to allow it in mixed-use zones, listed on the... Not, no, but you could allow it in other zones too, because the first question was to only allow it in mixed-use zones. This question is, does everybody, what does the Commission think about allowing in the mixed-use zones as one of the options?
Okay. Who's in favor of allowing it in mixed-use zones?
Well, those mixed-use zones, in option three. So the text, no, it's not only.
So the text, what we were talking about, the text being, was in this vote, allow in MU 1, 2, 3, 0, 3, 1, 3, 3, and 4, 1, within the coastal zone.
No, not only.
Yeah, not necessarily exclusively.
It says only there.
I know, but we're going to... This is option four. Okay. Let's explain option four one more time.
To allow in the mixed-use zones listed under option three, not only allow in.
Just allow. Who's in favor? Just to allow.
It could be in addition to.
Addition to, allow it in these, one, two, three, four. Okay. Everybody's in favor of that.
So is this fair to say...
It's just fair to say that we're all good with STLUs in those mixed-use zones, regardless of what else happens.
I voted for number one, which also addresses that.
Okay. These options just don't fall out to me like the general plan drives us. But anyway, is that enough for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we didn't actually get any, anything in favor of any residential zones.
No, we didn't. We voted against it.
Yeah, each option that had any residential in it, straw vote was more against than four.
We had, no, talking about number one, I understand.
It was three to four.
Three votes in the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, three.
Four against.
But four against.
And two to five in option two.
So we're still confused.
So there's still...
We have the majority in the one.
The majority did not vote for residential.
Well, one way, one way we could...
We didn't vote for residential. That was clear.
Starting from RVA all the way to RH, and then go...
What we could do is, it seems like it's easier to get consensus when we say, would you consider it in that zone? Would that be of value? We went through our...
Should we allow this?
I think some of you think it should be allowed in all residential zones. Some of you think it should be allowed in some residential zones.
Well, we really haven't had any discussion about those zones, and I never got my consensus or my question asked, what's compatible? And why isn't it compatible? I mean, we've done our own homework, but I haven't heard discussion on that.
You...
Because...
You're right.
I mean, I've kind of come up with some ways that maybe there's a possibility in some of the residential zones, but we haven't had that discussion, and I don't have an option to vote on anything like that. So I'm saying no, because...
And you're right, because, for example, in the higher-density zones, the distance may be 300 feet. If we decide in R1, which I may not, but if we decide in R1, it may be 750 feet, that type of thing. So it would be a situation where in each zone, the distance and density may be different. Is that allowed, City Attorney?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes.
Thank you. There is a caveat to that. There's a caveat to some of these distance requirements. As you start expanding certain distance requirements, then you become de facto exclusionary zoning, which is disallowed by the courts. And we found that out when we did SB 2. In other words, once you get around that 700 feet and greater, and you apply it to a zone or the city, you can use the GIS system, then the whole system kind of implodes on you. We found that out with SB 2. We got about 700 feet, and that was just for the homeless zoning. And so you get much beyond, you start expanding those things in and out, you have to be very, very careful. And so I think you would concur with what I just said.
Yes, with regard to SB 2, you're spot on. There are certain uses that simply can't be outright banned, either expressly or de facto.
But I'm saying that certain, if you expand certain...
It becomes a de facto ban.
De facto banning, and that is disallowed by the courts.
With certain uses, but there are some uses that can be banned. So for example, if the Commission wanted to recommend not allowing these uses within residential, that's within your purview tonight. Whether that was...
But the distance stuff, yeah, you have to be careful.
Yeah, but if it results in a de facto ban, it's the same as an express ban, and so in this instance, unlike SB 2 with homeless shelters, and that wouldn't be disallowed.
Okay, so we could do that. Have different distances and densities for different zones.
As long as there are findings that can be articulated and a reasons rationale for that different distancing.
Right.
Based on, based on the different characteristics, as has been discussed...
Right.
Of different neighborhoods.
Exactly. Exactly.
And if I can just interject, I think that what the Commission is getting to right now is sort of another way of thinking about this. You know, these options about, you know, the options get, are basically narrowing down from, you know, from one to three, less and less of the city. The question is, you know, is there a circumstance, is there a regulation that the Commission would feel comfortable with, that they could foresee that we could allow these in all zones? Or is there no amount of regulation that the Commission feels is going to be adequate to address these uses in, say, low-density? If there's no regulation that the Commission feels comfortable with, you know, that would allow this in low-density residential, well, then that's a pretty simple straw vote. Let's just take low-density residential out of it. But if there's a, if you can foresee that with distancing requirements and density and, you know, all the other development standards that we can talk about, that, oh yeah, I could see this being in low-density residential, well, then let's leave it on the table, and then at least that gives staff a little bit of direction. But if you can see no way that this is ever going to fly in low-density residential, or high-density residential, whatever, you know, the personal preferences, then, you know, that kind of informs staff moving forward.
I can't rule that out. And that's what's been bothering me about this vote, because in my readings on this, what one of the biggest complaints about is amenities. That's where the noise occurs. Rooftops.
Pools.
Pools, backyards. If you have a small, single-family residence, small backyard, you're not going to get the complaints. And maybe that's something to consider, I don't know. We haven't had that discussion yet.
Then those issues can be adjusted by regulation, not the zones.
That's why we're not tasked with regulation. We're tasked with zoning, land use, density, distance.
We are saying, is it allowed in residential? If we can't find a good solution to the problem, no, it's not.
Exactly.
But we haven't, I'm not clear on the compatibility issue totally, but I'd certainly err in the favor of the residents.
Yes.
In my vote.
Yes.
So I almost think we need to talk a little bit about that, and get clear and consensus. Is there a possibility of making them compatible if it's too much trouble, too much enforcement? No, it's not compatible.
Well, we shouldn't be babysitting for these types of...
That's right. We can't, I mean, we're complaint-oriented on our enforcement, and the damage is already done if the complaint.
Okay.
We're doing the land use.
Yes, we are. And I'm saying, in residential zone, is it compatible or not? You're saying no, obviously. Well, we really haven't had that discussion. And I want to get to your, I definitely want to get to your discussion of compatibility. I think, I guess my question for staff is, is would it be helpful to you if we asked that first question that you asked, which is, you know, is there some possible path, if there's some possible path, to having it be compatible, regardless of what that looks like? You know, would we be in favor of doing it in all zones? And we don't, we're not saying what that looks like right now, we're not saying how hard that is, we're not even saying that we'll even be able to get there. So it's, you know, it's still, it's still a long way to go. But I guess my question is, if we could answer that question for you, have a straw vote, would it help staff move forward with the zoning ordinance?
It could. I mean, if you say, hypothetically speaking, I think there's a way that these could exist in all residential zones, and then we go through and talk and just discuss the other development standards, and give some direction to staff on what you think would be necessary to regulate these in all zones, we'll create an ordinance based on these standards. And if we go through the ordinance later and you say, you know, now that I see this, you know, all of these, you know, enforceable standards, I'm not so sure that this is going to work in low-density residential or medium, whatever, then at that point, we can take it out. You know, it seems like we're almost saying, well, I don't know what zones it's going to be allowed in, because I don't know what the opportunities are to regulate based on standards. So now we're talking about starting with the standards and then going to zone. Where last week, we talked about starting with the basic question of zones, and then having the standards, you know, naturally follow that.
We have so many tools we can use to regulate them, and I believe we can always find a tool to be restrictive enough to make them compatible. So at the beginning, I'm reluctant to ban them for any zone, or any residential zone.
So why don't...
As Adam just said, if we find no tool will make that work, we come back and just ban it in that zone.
Yeah, it may just be worth going through the rest of the standards, looking at what the options are. You know, I can give you some, a little bit of background on what other cities have done.
Okay, let's do that.
And then we'll, you know, revisit this after we know what our options are. So the second, the second issue, and I'm just going to, does the Commission feel like taking straw votes as we go through this?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to just go through this, and we'll have you fill it in later?
Why don't, maybe to make things easier, why don't you go through it? We can have a little discussion on each one. We can jot down our notes and give them to you at some other time, and then we can talk about it.
I don't want to take a straw vote in each and every one of these this evening.
Okay.
You know, this is some serious thought and deliberation that we have to go through.
Agreed. Okay. So we have, density is the first standard. This would be a limitation on the number of STLUs in any given area. That area could be the entire city, it could be a specific zone, it could be a geographic area. The options that I have listed are, you know, some cities don't have a limitation on this. And so they would, you know, allow as many as the market will bear, basically. Some cities do put a cap on the total number of permits. One of our options would be to cap the permits to the number of active rentals currently. Like I said with the city council, there is a cap right now in place, and that's to everybody that has a, has been issued a vacation rental permit as of last Tuesday evening. It's, that number's about 500. We could pick that number. We could pick a number that's a little higher, pick a number that's a little lower, but that's one way to do it, and that's just put a cap on the total number of permits in the city. The third type of cap would be based on each zone. So we could say, we don't want more than 1% of the housing stock in any given zone to be used as an STLU.
You said total housing, and is that total city housing or zone by zone?
It's any zone, permits within any zone to not exceed more than 1% of total housing units.
Of the other zone.
Of the zone, yeah. So...
But we don't know, but we don't know the total number in each zone.
We're working on it.
We don't know that yet, so we can't, we can't give 1% or something. He's just, he's just working through it.
I haven't seen this yet, but our, one of our IT people, Chris Wright, was working on that today.
Okay.
And see what he provided us.
I think we have the information in a very large and unwieldy spreadsheet. It's a matter of pulling that information out, getting into the database. So it's, it sounds like, at least from the discussion I had with Chris today, it will
at least from the discussion I had with Chris today, it will be there. But, you know, it's not an unknown. We have to just dig it out.
There's an idea of it there.
Okay. All right. So in this, this is the RL zone, southwest. It's got 1,556 total units, and the number of vacation rental permits currently active in this area is 41. So there's 2.6% of the housing stock in this zone is currently used as short-term lodging units.
That we know, that's got permits.
That have permits on them, I should say that.
How many are really active, though? That's, you know, we don't know how many are active. I mean, just in the last month, we've received, a couple of months, 100 more. So we don't really know how many are active.
But we know that there are active ones that aren't listed here as well.
Well, it's a tough number. You only know with what you know.
And you're right, that'd be tough to really come up with because we don't have a real--
You have to go with the best data you have. The cost of perfect data is infinite, you know. So you have to go with what you have. It's just the best reasonable--
But we know how many people have been paying TOT. I mean, that could be a definition of what is active.
And we have some people--
That's a lagging indicator.
--in finance compiling that information now. But, you know, more to your point, we also have varying levels of usage of these. Some people, you know, pay very little tax because they don't rent them out very much.
Right.
Some people, you know, they use them exclusively.
Right. This is a density, we have data. We can make a reasonable estimate. Okay. Go back to the briefing.
All right. Okay. So those are some options with density. And that's just going to, that's just going to put a limitation on the number in any specific area.
We just hold right there and take about a break. I think we've been at it for two and a half hours and take about a 10-minute break.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll reconvene at 10:00.
Let's briefly go through some of this clustering. Parking, I think, let staff work a little bit, trash work. I mean, some of the parking is already taken care of with the TOT orders.
Yes, I don't know why it's here. It's in TOT.
Let's briefly just brief the clustering stuff and then go on to the next chart. And then I'd like to get a few straw votes done and then we'll try to chart.
Okay. Okay. If you'd like, I can just go through some standards and then you stop me when you want to have a discussion or take a straw vote. So clustering is, it's about proximity of one use to another. This would be, this could be independent of density or in combination with it. One option, of course, would be to not have any clustering requirements. Another would be to limit how many are allowed on a single block. One example would be have three per block with no adjacencies. Another one would be to look at spatial distances. An example of this would be having a minimum separation of 300 feet from any other STLU within a residential zone. And just for some background, most cities do not provide distancing requirements for STLU's. There are a couple that I've found. The county of San Luis Obispo requires a 200-foot separation. Durango, Colorado, requires a 500-foot separation. And then Bend, Oregon, has a 250-foot separation.
You have a question. Yeah, Adam, your maximum of three per block with no adjacencies. The problem with that option is that blocks are short, they're long, they're medium. So, you know, that's one thing that would be difficult.
I have an idea about that. Rather than say per block, we could just say that they have to be separated a certain distance along the block. So if you have a long block, you can maybe have more. But if you had a short block, you might not be able to fit three. So, you know, like a lot, average width in town is probably about 60 feet. And say, you want to space them no closer than five apart. You know, you could say whatever--
Some are 40 feet.
Can we have a rule and add a slide on next to--
But that would be another way to deal with it. So--
Okay.
Be adjustable depending--
I think that was probably the essence of my question. I was going to ask about, you know, can we, in addition, restrict them, you know, if there's a long block, say only one per block or something like that. But I think your answer is--
Commissioner Blackwell.
So I guess that, would that also apply to the higher densities? So you have a block of SFRs and then--
Well, you could, if you want to, you could change it per code because like Wayne pointed out, in the higher-density areas, our lot widths are 40 feet wide. So maybe you want to reduce it a little bit in the higher density. And then the single-family, where you have larger lot widths, maybe you want to lengthen it.
What about in condominiums?
Okay.
What about in condominiums? How would that work? So you've got, maybe you've got 50 units within a very--
It would really depend on what you wanted to do. If you wanted, in that area, maybe you don't want to do that restriction because it would be really hard to apply, or it would just mean that you only have, in a 50-unit condominium, you might only be allowed one.
Okay, just a minute here. We've got other people's lights on. So, you know, one bite at the apple at a time. Okay, Mr. Crandall.
Yeah, I'm not sold on the spacing at all because you take, put all three together, you've only got two residential lots that are adjacent to it, or any lot. And you have three of them on a block that are separated. Now you've got six residences that are adjacent to them, minimum. And I don't think that makes sense.
Commissioner Wood.
I wonder what's the logic about spreading them out, comparing, clustering them. Now we can designate an area, overlay map, and say, this is where we want those STLU to go. And strictly limit them in the rest of the residential zone instead of spreading them out to affect more people in a more area. So that's one thing. And then we're talking about minimum separation from other residential zones. Schools, the worst time is nighttime. School is not on. Parks, parks has no people living there at nighttime usually. So the rationale to have a distance from schools and a park, in my viewpoint, is not there. The other comment about cap the total unit, if we were to cap the units, I think it should be equitable to distribute them through a lottery system or even auction system instead of just grandfathering most people. system, instead of just grandfathering most people.
I, I kind of go to the keep it simple mode, which is the 300-foot rule. And I come from that. It's 300 foot is the way the city notices people for meeting. We got a card because if you're, we had a VRBO within 300 feet, there's state law that drives 300 feet. You could apply it to sober living homes at 300 feet, you could just apply it to the home occupancy ordinance to 300 feet for certain, certain types of uses specified whenever we get around to that ordinance, which needs drastic help. So, there, and there's a legal basis in state law of 300 feet, so there, and everybody gets treated equal, you know, across the other issues on our plate that do relate to this thing that we haven't even started on those other two yet. So that's where, if you wanted the feedback from me. So that's enough, let's go on to the next chart if we could.
Because I think trash and parking, you can pretty well handle them, you think?
Yeah, so it is covered, it is covered that there's a, in the, in the chapter, Title Three, rather, about parking. This is just discussing actually setting a limit to how many, how many cars you can have. The TOT just regulates that you have to park on-site. There could be additional restrictions, but they're, they're relatively similar, so I won't go into too much detail there. Trash is discussed.
I do actually have a comment on the parking. The, one thing in these older areas of town, you've got smaller garages, some made in the 1950s, a lot of people can't fit their cars in now, and a lot of the people, vacationers, drive down SUVs. For these parking spaces, I think that we may want to think about requiring a minimum size, making sure there's a minimum size. So if someone has a garage that's too small to fit a modern SUV, that's probably not going to do it for a number of vacationers.
That's a good point.
Okay, well, if, if we want them to utilize just legal parking spaces, then we already have that covered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the TOT ordinance.
It's TOT.
Okay.
They have to use it on-site, that's, so you can't be in conflict, in conflict with that.
Well, if someone has a, has a non-conforming garage and they want to...
It's still a land use.
Then, then...
They don't get to register, so...
They don't get to register as... Oh, okay, I thought you were saying they would get to register.
No, they do not get to register. They don't have legal parking.
As long as we got that covered.
They don't have legal parking, why?
If, if they don't have enough legal parking, let's say they are supposed to have two parking spaces and they only have one, they could still get a permit. The restriction then is you have to, you can only park in that one spot, meaning that whoever's renting it can only have one car. It doesn't, there's nothing in that section of the code that says you have to have...
The TOT passing says it's got to be parked on-site, on the property.
Yes. So if you've got two bedrooms, you need whatever it is, two, two legal parking spots on-site. And if you, if you only have one, then you can't get a permit, right?
No, that's, it's not making that leap there.
It's very difficult to enforce that because we should ask them to provide enough parking spaces. But if we ask them to park on the site, and that means we, we don't allow the guests to park on the street, it's impossible to enforce. But if you allow some units to get a permit without enough parking space off the street, then they could simply have the people in the park on the street. How do you enforce it?
Yeah, yeah, I don't...
Well, it would be enforced, it would be enforced when somebody complains.
No, they won't. It's not going to happen. People don't know. They're looking at the streets, they can't tell that car belongs to that...
Require them to provide enough parking space and let them to park anywhere they want.
So this, this could be, you know, this is a, this would be a reactionary enforcement, you know, versus density and clustering, which are, would be part of the review to get, you know, a permit. We would verify that they meet those standards prior. Parking, we would simply say, you know, if you have a 10-bedroom place and it's obvious that, you know, you're not going to accommodate, you know, all those people with two vehicles, well, have a minimum number of vehicles per bedroom. And then, you know, if you have, if, if your vacation rental would require five parking spaces, then you have to provide those on the site. That's one way to say it.
But if it's, if I understood, maybe I misunderstood you, maybe just said...
For a bed and breakfast, we require a number of parking spaces per room.
Right.
Well, if we're going, if we want to look at this similarly, we would say, if you have a five-bedroom house, you need five parking spaces. Do you have five legal parking spaces on your site? If the answer is no, you don't get a permit.
And that's true even for the existing ones that are being grandfathered, or if we do, assuming we take that path?
We'll get to the amortization, but yes, this would apply to, this would apply to permits moving forward.
So option three is one parking space per bedroom plus one space plus two spaces if the owner lives on-site.
Yeah.
Can I clarify something about what the TOT revised regulations would do with respect to parking? When we take in your short-term lodging unit permit, you're required to provide a floor plan that shows how many bedrooms so we can determine your maximum occupancy allowed in your permit, and you're required to show how much off-site parking you have. And based on how many off-site parking spaces you have, that's the maximum amount of cars that are permitted, and that would also be...
Is it on-site or off-site, am I...
On-site, on-site, yes. So that would also be the maximum number of cars that you can have on the property. So if your house was built in 1940 and it was only built with one parking space, but it's a five-bedroom home, you're still limited to having one car.
So the TOT really covers this?
So that covered that, so, well, but if, if you, but I think what Adam is saying is you take it a step further, and if, what we're saying in TOT is you can only have one car. What Adam is saying is that if you want a, a permit, or you want to have that use in that zone, you have to have the required amount of parking for that residence. So if the code currently says you're required to have three off-site parking spaces, but you only have one, you would be required to have three and comply with the current code before you can get your STLU. So that goes above and beyond what the TOT does if the planning commission is so inclined to regulate above and beyond what the TOT does.
Because the TOT lets, lets someone in a current house say, well, I'll only rent one bedroom because I only have one car. They have two bedrooms, because they only have one space, but if they have two bedrooms, we don't know if they're renting that out and using up another car. So here, we'd be saying, you actually have to, that's what the current, that's what the most recent one, the TOT says, right? And we would be saying, in addition to that, if you were sitting there and you're non-conforming and you, you've got two bedrooms and one parking space, we're not going to give you a permit because you can't park, you need two spaces on-site in order to rent two bedrooms, even if you're only getting a permit for one bedroom.
You could, you could look at it that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You could also look at it by the number of occupants, which might be a way of looking at it. So if, if, if the site allows 12 occupants, clearly, one parking space isn't going to, you know, accommodate 12 people. So you might want to say, think, you know, a car, you know, liberally, you could say four people per car, you know, based on occupants, so you have to have at least that many parking spaces. And I think it's getting at what Commissioner Wu was saying, is, you know, if you want to try and limit the parking impacts to a neighborhood, you know, make sure that you have enough parking spaces based on the amount of people that are going to be in the building.
Mm-hmm. It's like one parking spot per bedroom or something like that, that one option there.
Which, that could be a case-by-case anyway, at the time of permit issuance, staff would review each case.
But you got to tell them what is, they have to know what's in the code, which is...
The occupants are determined by the bedrooms.
Right.
So if you have, it's two per bedroom plus two extra, right?
Right.
So, you know, there's going to always be at least four people, right? So you can, you, if you just limit it by the bedrooms, that's pretty restrictive because in, you know, if you had...
Yeah, that's option three.
That's usually two people per bedroom and then now you got, you know, potentially, for a three-bedroom house, that's three parking spaces. Anyway, but we can look at it either way, what are we...
Like option three here is one per bedroom plus two spaces if the owner's on-site.
My neighbor just bought a, a thing here, and it, they can select 12 people, it's a, are 12 people.
You can, you can iterate this thing to death, too. Okay, we got some feedback there?
Perfect. All right. Trash is another one, you know, I'll just go quickly. In reviewing other cities, most of them just have hours that the trash cans can be out on the street, related to the day when they collect trash. So I would, I would assume that you'll see something like that.
The amount of cans and the enclosure stuff, I think, is worthwhile to look at, though.
There are existing codes that the city has about screening trash cans. It's, it's kind of partial screening and it assumes a residential use, which is, you know, typically two, two, you know, there's rolling bins.
Should you consider the double...
Some of the public comment we've gotten has shown that there, that these uses sometimes will have a lot more trash receptacles, and so in that case, we may want to look at more restrictive screening of, of these.
Do they have enough bin, do they have enough bins to handle the, the stuff that happens there, too?
Yeah, well, that could be, that could be something we look at.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's verifying the number of bins.
Okay.
That seems, we'll put some thought into that.
That's some...
Present a, a moderate approach to that. Owner occupancy, let's move it on here. All right, so owner occupancy, this was a big topic at the city council, of course. What I've listed here are basically the, kind of the options that were, that were discussed previously. First would be no requirement that the owner occupy the unit or live on-site for any portion of the year. Another one would be that the STLU owner is on-site, lives there at least 14 nights per calendar year. This would be, this is consistent with the IRS requirements to, to demonstrate a second residence. And we've, we got that from a lot of public comment that said, you know, I own this house and I, I do use it myself, part of the year, and so if they're going to claim it as a second residence, the IRS would require at least 14 nights a year. So that's one option, just to keep it consistent there. And then the last option is, is the most...
Regigist.
The highest requirement of owner occupancy, and that is 275 nights per calendar year, which is basically the, the opposite of, of saying that you can only exclusively rent your property for about three months or 90 days a year.
How do you track that, though?
Yeah.
How do you reinforce that?
Yeah, I wanted to comment upon this. First of all, not everyone buys these as second residences, somewhat, some of them buy them as investment properties, okay? So I don't know, you know, are we going to be there with a clipboard saying, okay, how many nights did you actually stay? I'm not really, I, I'm in favor of no requirement that the owner occupy the unit or live on-site.
Here's your S U, you'll permit, here's your GPS tracking bracelet.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, people buy, some buy these, like Mr. and Mrs. Bieber, they bought some, as an investment property, right? Okay, they're not going to live there, it's not a second residence, you know? So it's just, to me, it's just, I, it's just government overreach, as far as I'm concerned.
You can't enforce it, so I think it's, I don't know, you know, fill out an affidavit, perjury every year when you, when you come in and renew your permit, you know, I don't think we need to do that.
No.
Well, I agree, it's an enforcement problem, and I hate passing, you know, putting in zoning stuff, the stuff we can't enforce. On the other hand, we've heard time and time again how it seems to be the units that are not occupied by their owners who have the biggest issue. And if someone is, you know, if they're living there, they're still a neighbor, it's still a neighborhood, if we're talking about compatible use, that is, having someone living there full-time is about as close to compatible use as you're probably going to get. I even see 275 nights a year. I know people, you know, like to leave during the summer and they rent it out during the summer, but that's the high season, and if they're not there during the high season, then that's, that's, that's when people are going to be having a good time and that sort of a thing. That seems to me to be a ripe place for the, just the kinds of problems we're trying to solve. I don't have an answer, and we're still in kind of discussion about this, but I understand what you guys are saying, I agree, enforcement is, is a tough issue with this. But at the same time, having someone not there, even if they're, even someone who's not there for three months, someone who's not there like, basically full-time, of course, they're going to be gone for a couple of months for vacation or whatever, but we're not going to chain them to the, to the thing. But, you know, there as this is my home, these people are in my home, and having that kind of care for it is going to make a huge difference in terms of the compatible use in, in any of the zones. So I don't have an answer right now, but it seems to me that we've got a, we've got to have a way to have that owner there for most of the time.
But doesn't the TOT have something in there that the owner must be available and respond within a half hour? I mean, that's, that, that covers that, you know?
Well, anybody can respond, they can have, they can have a broker, you know, respond within a half an hour. The person who's there, who, it's their house, it's their neighborhood, they take care of it in a way that people who don't live there don't take care of it.
So, so wait a minute, I mean, if you have a single-family house, you're going to require them to live in one of the bedrooms?
Why do people just rent bedrooms, like Airbnb?
Well, no, but I mean, if someone wants to rent a whole house, you know, that doesn't make sense.
Or they're renting their mother-in-law unit behind the house or something, but, but I'm...
I think that's enough discussion for this right now.
That's just an issue that I see.
Yes, so there are, just, just to give some context, there are some cities that do have owner occupancy requirements, and it basically enforces home sharing, that's really what it is. During any short-term rental, the owners have to live there, that would be San Luis Obispo. Santa Monica, Santa Monica, we've heard from, and they do have some enforcement issues with this. The next, the next one is renter occupancy, and that is, actually, you know what, that's already covered in the TOT, I apologize. The annual rental limitations, these are, so Petaluma in San Jose limit short-term rentals to 90 days per calendar year. Somebody had mentioned allowing, like a, a home exchange from time to time. Monterey prohibits this use, but they do allow one short-term rental per 12-month period. So you could rent your home for up to 29 days once in a 12-month period. That, that could be an option if, if, you know, if, if, you know, an annual rental limitation, you know, a restrictive one is, is looked at. And then Ventura limits rentals during different periods of the year, they do allow them throughout the year, but they, they limit the amount of rental differently, depending on the year. So some of the options that we could look at would be, one, having no limits on the maximum rental days per year. Another one would be, like San Jose or Petaluma, have a maximum rental days of 90 per, per calendar year. And then finally, one option would be have a seasonal restriction, similar to Ventura, where rentals are allowed basically during the summer months when...
Problem with that option is it kind of goes against your, your general plan that says we encourage rentals, vacation rentals, in a balanced way all year round.
Yeah.
So, so the current general plan goes, says, hey, tourism's okay, it's there, it's kind of our thing, but we don't chase it, and we, and we actually encourage a balanced approach to it. So that's where I'd say the 90 days is probably good to me. Let's see, Mr. Wu, you had something to say?
Uh, yes. When I said I would prefer them, the STLU to be allowing all residential and mixed-use zones, there was a caveat that they are tightly controlled. The controlled thing is, I would call it the intensity of the use of, of seemingly incompatible business in residential zone. So the intensity is defined, I would define them, you know, either by space or by time or combination. In other words, it's within that space-time, not talking about advanced physics. But giving you a few examples.
Too late for Star Wars.
A homeowner wants to rent out, let's say, up to two rooms, when the homeowner is residing in that residence, maybe that shouldn't be allowed. Or year-round, a second... Or year-round, a second unit that's attached to second unit by our code, it's up to 30% of the main residence, if they want, if they live in the main residence and they want to rent that out year-round, that's acceptable by me. Someone wants to rent out the whole house for 90 days of the year, that's acceptable by me. But beyond that, they probably need a conditional use permit. So that is the intensity, considering either the space or the time or the combination.
Long-term rentals, though.
Yeah, that's not.
You can rent your house out for a year.
Yeah. Anything beyond 29 days, we're not worried about.
Anything over 29 days, we're not.
It's a different.
We're talking about a short-term rent.
Well, you're saying you can rent it out for 90 days.
I think per year.
They can rent, they can rent their house as a short-term rental unit for 90 days. Beyond that, they can do anything they want. They can rent them out monthly, yearly, they can leave them empty, or they can live there.
Way too complex.
Yeah, way too complex, and you're saying, hey, these things are, do affect the neighbors, that's why we're limiting the time. We're going to let the neighbor suffer with this for 90 days, and then we're going to give them a respite for a while. That doesn't make sense to me. It's either good or bad.
Keep it simple. Yeah. I don't believe, first of all, we need to stay away from the term conditional use permit. That runs with the land.
Yeah.
We need to nix that right off the bat. But, but I have a question. Home sharing, that's not part of the T O T. They're allowed to do that, aren't they? That's, that wasn't addressed in the T O T, and I thought I heard that.
No.
They're allowed to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're not concerned here with home sharing. They're allowed to do that.
Are they allowed to do it on a, on a daily basis, a weekly basis?
Sure, sure.
When the, when a version of the T O T amendments addressed owner occupancy, we clarified that home sharing was something that wasn't subject to any of the maximum rental days or maximum owner occupancy days.
Correct.
Could be allowed year-round.
Okay, so that's taken care of.
Yeah, that's taken care of. People, people should be allowed to rent out a bedroom for vacation rental without, and not have to pay tax on it, but without type of restrictions that we're talking about here.
So then, so then, if, what this annual rental limitations is talking about specifically is non-owner-occupied units.
Right.
Right? So at that point, I'm, I'm thinking things a little differently, then we might want to put some, some limitations on. Well, I mean, you know, Bart, you, you make a good point, it's, is it a compatible use or not? And it's almost like, well, at that point, sorry, do we, do we just say if it's non-owner-occupied, it may not be compatible?
Okay. All right, so let's see, we've got minimum, so minimum rental lengths, that's, it's another thing we've, we've seen. Most cities don't have this, some do. Solana Beach has a minimum rental of seven days. Ventura has seven days during the summer and two days in the rest of the, in the rest of the calendar year. Monterey County has seven days, and the city of San Diego has seven days for multifamily. Some options would be, you know, not to limit the length of each rental. Another option would be to have a minimum rental of, of three nights. A little bit more restrictive would be rental of seven nights.
And, and what's, what's the goal of a minimum rental length? Are we, is there better customers who come in with three nights or with seven nights? Or, you know, what is the, what have we seen as the effect on the neighborhood of shorter rental days or longer rental term?
I, I can answer that. From the rentals in my neighborhood, someone comes for two days, they leave, someone else comes for a day, they leave, someone else comes for three days, they leave, another, somebody else for two days, they leave. It creates a lot of chaos to do something like that, quite frankly. And that's why, either it's five days or seven days or whatever, but the longer this stays, you're going to get, you're going to get someone in there that's going to be, I think, a lot more compatible with the neighborhood, you know?
What's the turnover service maybe?
And the turnover is just, is just incredible.
You know, okay. Now, I think that the briefing you gave us, which was the Coastal Commission on Solana Beach, and they accepted seven days in that area. That's something to think, to consider, you know, considering there's a Coastal Commission overview on this, is my way of looking. Okay?
All right.
Quiet hours. That's addressed in the T O T thing now, isn't it?
Uh, no, it's, what's addressed in the T O T is not, not having disturbing events and just following codes generally, things like the noise ordinance. A lot of these, a lot of cities do have specific quiet hours that are specific to these uses that typically range from 9:00 P. M. to 8:00 A. M., a little, sometimes a little bit later on, on weekends. If the noise ordinance covers this officially, you know, effectively, then this isn't something we would need to address if it's seen that that's not enough.
I would kind of favor your option two there.
This is already in the T O T, and it's, it's 20 feet from the noise source or the, or the noise ordinance, which no one can understand, and that's why they put 20 feet in there. That, that noise ordinance is just ridiculous technical.
You don't need a decibel meter anymore.
No, no. If you can see it, so it's already addressed, I think, in, in the T O T, isn't it?
Well, you know, we have limitations, our limitation when you can work on your house or have a workman work on your house, you know, those are in the codes of certain days a week and never on Sunday, and those are, you know, fairly well posted by most builders when you develop a house or build a house. And so I think we should put some quiet hours in effect.
Well, I think they're already in T O T.
Well, it's not, it's, we amended four sections of the municipal code. One of them was the, I think it was the unrelated, yeah, or was it?
It was both, yeah. The, we didn't address quiet hours specifically, meaning, you know, at nine o'clock, everyone has to come in who's outside and you have to not be getting noise. We didn't, we weren't specific to the hours in the day, but we did amend the code to say, as Wayne stated, that if you can hear the noise and you're 20 feet away, then that's a violation. So a code compliance officer or a sheriff's deputy can, can witness that and somebody can be given a citation for it.
Right, but you didn't specify hours.
No, we did not.
Oh, okay, so we need to specify hours then, because that does say you're 20 feet or more.
Yeah.
For the noise source, which is good.
We have in our code, what hours a day and week you can work on a house, you know, you can't run your bandsaws and all that. When I built my house, I had to post them and all that, so, you know, something like the option two would be, I think, very amenable.
I would, I would even go so far as option three, I think this is more sort of residential-friendly, and, you know, so I think it's something we should think about. It's, it's also true that with some of these, certainly hours is a lot better than not having hours. I'm worried about, you know, the fact that some of the residential districts, you don't want to, you know, it's a drag to have to pick up the phone and call an enforcement officer, and people hesitate because they don't want to be bothered and that sort of a thing. But we also have the situation here where we're not, these aren't hotels, right? We don't, it's not like you can call the manager or something like that and get it taken care of, especially if someone isn't on-site. So having that very strict, you know, when, you know, most residential homes anyway would probably be quiet, most likely, it gives a very kind of clear-cut definition, and I, I like having it in that timeframe of, this is, in a residential area, this is about the times, from a conservative point of view, that you would expect it to be quiet.
I don't know, normal people on a weekend, I have friends over, and I go till, you know, 10:00 o'clock at night, and I don't, Mr. Eggleson, that's his bedtime, because that's what he winds when we're cooking, planning a meeting, so, so, you know.
I heard that.
It's 9:30, he's still awake, so, anyway, I think you can go, go off and work some, some reasonable time restrictions in our ordinance, and, okay?
Okay, the next one is grandfathering and amortization. I'll just, I'll start this off, and you can ask questions as we go. So the city council started investing, looking at a, a five-year amortization or grandfathering. So we kind of went on, on both sides of that. You know, one, one option would be to have no amortization and allow non-conforming STLUs, based on the existing code section, the non-conforming structures and uses, which talks about basically maintaining non-conforming uses, not allowing them to expand, things like that. And, you know, and as those uses cease operations over time, they would be, not be allowed to, you know, be reestablished once they, they cease operations for a certain amount of time. This is, this is kind of what Seal Beach did. They, they prohibited the use in residential zones, but they are allowing existing vacation rentals to, to maintain as non-conforming. A second option, going back to that five years or transfer of ownership, this is what Monterey did. They, you know, they did it back in 1991. This seems like a very reasonable amount of time to amortize this type of use. It could be a faster timeframe, like three years or, or transfer of ownership. This is what we did with group instruction or group counseling uses recently in, in one of the other code amendments that we did. So we have done a faster timeframe than five years. One discussion in the city council was, was to add a, a trigger for existing vacation rentals that one citation would trigger, trigger a revocation hearing rather than the three citations that are listed. You know, that could be another option to, to speed up the process.
So in other words, you have one citation from a, an officer, as defined now in the T O T ordinance, would trigger administrative hearing, and that would be grounds to do what?
Grounds either revoke the permit or, I believe the language is, to require modifications to the use to mitigate those, you know, whatever that citation impact was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That neighbor of all things who complains about everything.
Yeah, no, what, no.
This would be an actual citation, not just a.
Right.
I understand that.
Right, no, I understand that. You know, we're still, we're still not, we're still pretty divided upon whether we should ban it in, for example, single-family neighborhoods. But if we did in single-family neighborhoods, then I think, someone suggested that they would be able to go through 18 months, which is two summers, instead of three years or five years. And the attorneys have said before that we could even go shorter than three or five years. I don't know, I don't think we should actually grandfather them in higher-density areas or amortize them there, because I think they should be allowed, they have been allowed for, 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 forever, that's where they belong, in higher-density areas. So I don't think there should be any amortization or grandfathering, then they should exist for whatever length they, they possibly can in those areas. But, for example, in single-family, if, if we do that, I don't know if we're going to do that, but that would be a much shorter period of time than three years, which would be, which would be two summers.
We're only going to amortize uses that are made non-conforming. So if we allow them in multifamily and they meet the standards of the STLU permit, there's no reason to.
There's no right reason to grandfather.
Yeah, so they'd be okay.
Okay. Your light off and Mr. Blackwell's on.
Okay, so this amortization period also can be tied into the clustering. So we're going to have to figure out a way to create some sort of continuity and separation. So we get the separation requirement established, suddenly you have this amortization, and you've got, the map you had before had them really close together, we're going to have to figure out which one gets to keep the permit, which one doesn't. Maybe by a lottery system or some mechanism to, to figure out who gets it, okay? So that's going to be important. The 18 to 24 months you're talking about is, is, I think, more of a reasonable, a reasonable time, considering the ramping up, folks that have reservations already, year out, it gives them time to, to cycle through those, it gives them.
I agree.
A reasonable amount of time to prepare for the inevitable, if it becomes a rule here. So that would be, that would be a good, a good approach, a good note to make here that we.
Mr. Rue, you have your lights on for a reason?
Yeah, it is on for a reason. Yeah, I, I, I prefer the shorter amortization, and, you know, I, I actually like it in the higher-density zones as well, because this has, I think in all the zones, you know, this is ramped up, these, I think, if you look at any of these pictures that we have, it's more dense than we want right now in, in terms of STLUs. So our goal is to bring it more conforming, have a density that the, that the city thinks is, makes it a, a, a proper use in that area. So I would, I would actually like that, I think, three years, you know, maximum, I think we could do fewer. I think we're not taking away the right of people to earn money out of their house because they could always rent it out for long-term rentals if they wanted to. So, you know, or move in or something like that.
Or sell.
Or sell. You know, it's not like they've got to, you know, move their business, they'd have to change some of the nature of it, but, so, yeah, I think, something you said, oh, right, yeah, so after that time, end of the, at the end of the amortization period, we would then have, just to clarify, we would then have some sort of lottery or some mechanism for saying, all right, we still are too dense or too clustered in some area, you know, there's going to be some winners and losers here, we have to figure out a fair way to do that. And that happens at the end of whatever this amortization period is, correct? Is that, is that the idea?
No, just amortizes.
Well, I'm asking.
Well, there's a couple of options that we have when it comes to both density and clustering. One would be have a lottery system. There has been other, like the county of Sonoma had a lottery system, based on, have to be put in place. That seems, that seems somewhat problematic, you know, on the outset, on the outset. Have a look at that.
Okay. There is, there's a, there is a precedence for lotteries, and there's one, there have been building moratoriums where cities have run lotteries on building permits and stuff like that, I think.
They do it in Camarillo, I think.
And so, I mean, there's a precedence, the cities know how to run lotteries, and we have, there are cities out there that run lotteries, I mean, not specifically rest-to-all use, but we could adopt, I think, some mechanism that we, I mean, it's like a building permit. So there, I mean, there's a process there that's been, and it's been substantiated by the courts, too, I think, because they've done it, they do it like the courts do, so.
We could also have amortization apply to certain non-conformities and have it apply to density or clustering, for those non-conforming aspects, and for those uses to, to close and then apply density and clustering to.
I think that's going to be a conversation I think we'll, we'll probably have to have soon.
Yes.
I think, because I, in my opinion, we're, it's kind of gotten too big and too intense as it is, so we're trying to get that down, and after, you know, a year and a half, two years, three years, whatever, we decide, if it's still too intense, the neighborhoods are affected, it's not a compatible use. We have to, we're trying to bring it in, not just conforming, but actual compatible use, which is an even higher standard.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell?
I just wanted to make it clear that you have, you have two right next door to each other. Upon adoption, this period, this term kicks in, so it's two horses running, they've got 18 months, whatever it is, who's going to get it? So we're going to have to, it's a real issue, assuming these folks are going to want to continue the use, so, you know.
First, you got to figure out the land use. Okay, back to process here, is this?
Process. Okay. So as Wayne mentioned, the permit does run with what land, as we have it, so none of the options here, including an unconditional use permit, as we have it now. the options here, including an unconditional use permit, as we have it now, staff feels that that probably would be problematic, and...
It would choke the system.
We have a couple things we can do. The first is, we have an STLU permit in that section of the GNS code. What we can do is create a special uses section in the zoning ordinance, and add some language Title III to tie that permit to the standards in the zoning ordinance. Staff's only looking at one permit, you know, according to Part 15. We could do an additional administrative STLU zoning permit, basically just be a redundancy on top of the other permit, but this one, you know, would be much more focused, just to the zoning of it. We could set it to automatically expire upon sale or transfer of property, basically mirror what the STLU permit does. The final one would be to have some type of discretionary zoning permit that does not run with the land, but tie it to the STLU permit that's in Title III. But what this additional discretionary aspect would do would be to notify neighbors similarly to how they're notified of the permit, but give them an opportunity to speak about the use before...
This would be like, tying the two together, I think is absolutely required, I think, you know, we have to have linkage between these two. Obviously, we haven't, that's why we're sitting here tonight. So, that option one has got to be, we got to have hooks across the way on all these things. But the council and the staff, I think in the final TOT ordinance backed off, that were originally going to be an STLU permit and a business license.
Yeah.
And so, they dropped the requirement for the business license, in other words.
Yeah.
And so, now you're, like option two, you're saying, now the owner would have to come in, and, once again, now he's got to get two permits, right? The TOT permit and a zoning, an STLU zoning permit.
Yes. So, the options are, the first option is, we keep one permit, but we tie zoning standards to it.
That's option one.
That's option one, which is really straightforward, simple option. Many cities have something similar to this.
I think that's absolutely mandatory.
Okay, so, the second option is, we have two standalone permits, both of them administrative, one's basically the STLU TOT permit, the other one's an administrative zoning permit, and then the last one is still two permits, the second one, though, being discretionary.
So, what's the purpose of the two, why do we need two permits? What's the...
Well, the discretionary permit, we would, we would have to have two separate permits, because the TOT section is not going to cover, is not going to cover discretionary approvals. So, if we want to have...
It is, if you link it, right?
No, we would still have to have the zoning, we'd still have to have an application specified in the zoning ordinance that requires a discretionary approval.
And we do that for some uses now, like the massage ordinance requires both a conditional use permit and then a separate permit, right?
Yes.
I offer a scenario for that tiered application process. If we were to decide annual rental limitation, someone would draw a line. Underneath that line, it's basically allowed through an administrative process. Beyond that line, we have them to go through a discretionary review.
Well, discretionary process.
Yeah, that could definitely be...
For example, 90 days. If someone wants to run a year round, maybe they are located at an isolated location with minimal negative impact to their neighbors. In those cases, we have them to go through a discretionary review process.
The problem with discretionary permits, you start getting to this word, this thin line, like Commissioner Eagleson, when things start running with the land, and so, I, you know, I mean, we're, we're getting very complicated here, is what I'm saying. Mr. Blackwell?
Huh?
We could develop a discretionary permit that doesn't run with the land, like a conditional use permit does.
I believe, and maybe legal can confirm this, that even a conditional use permit can be conditioned accordingly with limits, correct?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, yes, yes and no. There's some danger in conditioning a CUP not to run, but it can, it can be done based on the challenge that is or is not brought. What's important here is that if we are creating a new discretionary permit, we can create that as, as Jim said, not run with the land. So, that's, that's very easily done, we just state...
You're talking administrative permits?
No, this is a discretionary permit, they'll come to the planning commission, we could state in the enacting ordinance, Title 17, that it does not run with the land, that it ceases its existence upon transfer of the property.
Right.
For example.
And it'd be a covenant that the applicant would agree to.
Yeah, so, it wouldn't be a CUP, but it would be discretionary, so it would come before the planning commission.
Right.
It would, it would, but it would not run with the land.
I don't think we, I'm sorry, I don't think we want a conditional use permit at all, because we're going to have people lined up here, and we're going to be here five days a week handing out conditional use permits. And that's not what we're here for to do.
And the span time, the staff time.
But these permits should be recordable, so that in fact, when the sale of the property occurs, the city is notified from the title company that it has been sold, so that the vacation rental does not continue.
You know, it can't be, yeah, let's not advertise a sale, and it is a vacation rental or something like that, you know, so...
Oh, we can have staff pre-screen those applications. We set up a standard, if they don't meet those, then they don't come here.
Yeah, but they could sell it six months after they got a permit, and it continues as a vacation rental for another six months, which is not what we're all about here.
Okay, so, Mr. Ruhl.
I agree with you, Wayne, I think we want to restrict these a lot. I do have, I guess, one question about the discretionary permit. Would that still come before the planning commission?
It can.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to. Well, the first thing that's going to happen is, there's going to be a run on the new permits.
Discretionary permit is either going to go to the zoning administrator, the planning commission, or the city council.
Yeah, that's your three options in life, when you go down to basically option three.
But, okay, I, we'll have to go further with some of these other things, I feel like if we've got...
Option one and two, some blending there, I mean, we need to, we need to connect whatever we come up with for chapter 17 into chapter three, 3.4. I think we're all, I think the staff would agree with that, wouldn't you?
Yes, you know, ultimately...
Whether we need another administrative permit, and you make the point, you know, massage parlor, we have a lot of administrative permits required in city government, so, that's something, option one and two, something to look at, I would think worthy of looking further, but I think going under the discretionary arena there is probably a step too far, my feeling. But we mean, we want to make sure that the things that, Mr. Eagleson just mentioned, that it's recorded, da-da-da-da-da-da, we have the, we have the system lets us know when these things happen.
And we're happy with an administrative permit, believe me. But I just wanted to mention, the advantage of the discretionary permit is you can put conditions on it to meet special circumstances on a case-by-case basis.
So, is that...
The zoning administrator could do it, too.
Yeah.
We don't want to, you know, take a bunch of things up to planning commission that don't need to be risen to that level, certainly, so...
This, we could be creating a real bureaucratic monster here, which is, that's the danger, and that's where I think we need to really, we really, really need to step back and walk slowly on this.
Yeah, the real distinguishing, the identification that would help staff would be, you know, what's the support of a discretionary permit process? Is there support for that? Staff would probably rather keep this administrative, and probably rather option one, just keep it all in one permit, just tie sections of the code together, we're not, we don't have to be redundant, we just have a more robust permit.
Well, just to make sure that the, whatever the connections go from option two to option one are, the things that would not run with the land, automatically expire on sale or transfer, all that stuff gets connected over. Okay? Mr. Chairman, I've got two follow-up issues. One is, multi-unit buildings have not been discussed. For example, if someone lives in one of the units, and they ran out two units or three units, or how many units are we allowed, we're going to be allowed to rent out in multi-tenant buildings, in buildings? And also...
When you look at that.
And also, the, there's a 62-unit building in the Pier Bowl that currently has 22 vacation rentals, 11 of which are registered, 11 which are not registered, and they are, they are seeking assistance and help from the city, because their homeowner associations do not take, or CCNRs do not take into account vacation rentals. So, we have to talk, we have to really consider that also. I'm still researching two others, large buildings in the Pier Bowl, and I understand that their CCNR is prohibited, but I've got, I've got to find that out. I know people in both, so I'll find that out. But we have to consider that, because 22 in a 62-unit building, and 11 are...
It's a hotel.
Yeah, it is a hotel.
Technically, yeah, it meets the definition of a hotel.
Yeah.
And it should require conditional use. If it's in a zone, it's a hotel.
It's all sweet hotel.
Pardon me?
It's all sweet hotel.
Awesome. Yes, thank you, it is all sweet with a view hotel.
Well, that is a hotel, really.
Yeah. And the other issue I wanted to bring up was, for example, if there is a, two condos side by side, okay, and they're owned by separate people, but they're both vacation rentals, how are we going to handle that? Because I know of several. If we talk about density and distance, that's going to be an issue also. So, we have to consider that, because, you know, there is, there are, there are examples of that, and so I think we have to think out of the box on something like that. Perhaps, you know, one would get a permit, the other one would have to go through the zoning administrator in order to get permission to do that. I don't know, but there's, we have to consider that.
Now, like, it could be considered one building, two units, but one building, you have to have a separate one, because you're going to be paying the taxes.
They're separate owners.
But they're separate owners.
They're separate, two condos.
You have to have one building.
No.
They're subdivided.
And there's going to be, well, they have an association also.
They don't.
Density wouldn't allow for it.
How do they pay to build?
It's two units, so they don't.
Well...
Same as a D-Plugs.
Owned by different family members, for example, and they just sort of, you know, agree to agree. When we do, when we do those type of condo things, we make them put together CCNRs per the city standard, so, we've proved many of those, I think we've moved that down a level in some ways, but they're, they're required to have, even if it's two units or three or four units, they're required to have CCNR. We've proved many of those. That's in place now, so that's enforcement, isn't it, really?
Yeah.
In that particular instance, I would think.
One of the, the first point you brought up about a multi-family building where an owner lives there, before, in the, in the TOT section of the code, we had that identified basically as a home share, and so it was, it was exempt from the same kinds of requirements that were discussed about the full, you know, the exclusive rentals. I'm assuming that we're going to address that issue specifically, but I think staff's understanding is that the direction is, that that would be looked at as one single short-term rental property, you know, consistent with somebody who's renting out to their...
Except for the fact that, if you read the Orange County Register yesterday, it talks about affordable housing. And these are apartments I'm talking about, and, and that the affordable housing for South Orange County specifically is getting worse and worse and worse, where the population's getting older, young people cannot afford to live here, it's our housing element, you know, so, that's really something that we have to consider. And I don't think we should just group it together with home sharing. I think we really need to talk about it, because if in fact someone rents out, lives in one unit, rents out three, there goes three apartments off the market, presumed I...
Pardon me, thank you.
So, I think that's something we have to consider here. We have a, you know, there was a, one in my neighborhood where it was a four-unit, and long-term tenants, they all were thrown out.
Pardon me?
They all were thrown out, all turned into vacation rentals until the neighbors went berserk, and a new owner came in and turned it back into long-term rentals, but that, these people were thrown out, they'd lived there for five, six, 10 years.
Maybe, maybe the planning commission can give their thoughts to the staff on what number they think is appropriate. I think a good starting point is, I think, is it six for a hotel? Six rooms is defined as a hotel? So, you could argue now, as a baseline, that right now, limit six.
So, six units would be off the market, six apartment units would be off the market?
Well, six or more is defined as a hotel falls into, so, we're allowed in residential.
Do we have that, do we have that definition in our, on our code somewhere?
So, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that if you want to use a baseline of the current code, and by the definition of hotels used, we can start at six, if you think their number, you know, Wayne, you were suggesting maybe four or some other lower number.
Do we...
It'd be good to get the feedback from the commission on what they think.
Do we intend to increase our definition of a hotel in the zoning ordinance? Is that what, like Commissioner Blackwell been innovating at, like, also?
Yeah, I think that we will probably end up redefining how we look at hotels, and also short-term lodging units.
Boarding houses, the whole bit.
We'll create definitions as part of this ordinance, almost for sure.
We have to really, we have, the definitions are the key part, sometimes we get that late, we burn out, but those are critical. I think what, the point he's been trying to make is very key, but we really need to tie that up.
And then our clustering models will also affect, control that. We start getting into our densities and our, how we're, how many we're allowing in a certain area by density, that would be addressed, we just have to figure out how we're going to tie that in.
Right, that's it, you posed that question, we were first talking about clustering, and you, you know, there's a number of ways, I'm sure you can think about it. You can say, the building itself is only counted as one, and it can have up to X amount, I don't know, whatever you guys decide, probably the best way to look at it.
Okay, we've gone through the chart, people were supposed to turn them in.
I actually, I do have one more item I'd like to bring up, didn't quite know what category it would go into, maybe something you could look into. I think it would help a lot with enforcement, and also the city's ability to do resource planning and financial planning, if we could start getting a lot of more information from the owners and agents, probably the agents on the websites. It would be easy for them, actually, to send us a lot of good information that we could use for that, like, when the reservation is, what the location is, how many people and vehicles are expected, what, how much TOT is going to be generated from that particular reservation, and then when the reservation closes, we should get that from them as well, which would help us a lot with that.
Who is, who is we then supposed to get that?
The city.
The city.
The city.
The city. Where in the city, the business people?
Well, the collective TOT, yeah, but we might want to go to planning or enforcement in terms of who's coming, how many people are coming when, because if we see that in June, we've got a big uptick of people coming, we may need more enforcement.
That sounds like a bureaucratic nightmare.
It's very easy to do.
For the city.
I don't think that's part of our business here, I don't know, but maybe have a sidebar discussion with the city and the IT people, the business people, it's beyond the purview, I think, of the planning commission.
Well, in terms of saying, in terms of saying a compatible use has to provide this, and part of this is the disinformation about the various reservations.
We're trying to build a really complex watch.
Information, excuse me.
Excuse you, I'm sorry.
And, and including information, not just to the city, but also to the renter. There's a lot of these sites who don't tell the renter how much TOT they're paying, which implies that they may not be paying TOT at all. The renter should see that, we should be able to provide information to the renter that we want, that we require shown to the renter, if we want to do that. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we don't have to do, there's a lot of things we can do, there's opportunity here, and from an IT perspective, both in the city and over for the agent, it's not a difficult thing to do, so, so, it's, it's easy.
I manage...
Excuse me, public comment is closed, thank you very much. Now, I think we're about...
Now, I think we're about wrapped here, I guess. We've gone through the chart. I'd like to try one last effort here, based on our current general plan, and our current zoning area, I would like to conduct a straw vote on residential low, and very low and low-medium. You know, and based on the current general plan and the zoning ordinance, I have a feeling that they should be restricted from those areas. And so, I'd like to have a straw vote on who is in favor on restricting them on V, residential low, very low, and medium low. All in favor, raise your hand.
Wait, what other restrictions?
There's three things, R1, 2, 3 is, is R, very low, R low, and medium low, is that right?
Is medium low R1?
Yeah.
Basically, it covers, like, attached condos in a lot of the specific plan areas. For all purposes, it looks like a single family.
Right.
But it allows a little bit higher density.
It allows duplex.
It's not a duplex?
No.
It's detached? These are all detached?
No.
It was given to you in the past.
Residential low is single-family detached. Residential medium low...
We don't have any medium lows in...
It's in the zoning code.
The product type could look like a townhome, under the medium low. It's essentially a single-family type of a neighborhood versus a multi. It's definitely a lower density than the RM.
So, I'd like to have a vote, a straw vote on that. So, this, this, this means that we're saying, if we, if we vote for this, I know it's not binding, but if we vote for this, we're saying that... You have directions to staff, anyway.
I understand. But we are, we're saying essentially that all this work we're doing for this is only for residential medium and high, and mixed use, I suppose.
No, we're just saying a straw vote, we're not saying that at all.
Well, all that's left is that.
Well, Chairman, I, my understanding of your, your proposal is, should we being STLU in RVL, RRN, RML zone, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And my vote will be conditioned upon a number of other things, but I'm going to, I'm going to vote for...
Yeah, I, I can't, yeah, I can't, I can't support it if we're, if we're forcing, if we're now saying that it's going to be different than others.
Other than vote against it, that's fine, okay.
All in favor? I got four. All not in favor? Three.
Okay. It's just, it's just a sense, something for, that's a, some sense to, is that helpful to staff? Okay.
And we, and we currently have a straw vote already on mixed use, standalone. So, we've really only got RH and, but RM and RH?
Correct.
That aren't addressed yet.
So, then, let's bite the bullet. I'll ask for a straw vote on who wants to eliminate, who wants to restrict zoning in RM and RH in the same way as the residential lows.
One in favor of that restriction?
Describe what those are.
Not allowing STLU's in RH and RM?
Just like, just like we voted for not allowing them in residential low, a moment ago.
You understand the zone, RM is the medium-density residential, RH is residential high. Basically, the Pier Bowl...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to support that.
There's, there's single-family in both of those.
So, we're saying that...
Well, there's a mix of, of different density of houses in all those zones.
I'm going to point out that there is single-family detached.
But, but that doesn't get affected by the other, the previous direction, because that's the zone, not the units.
That would be ruled out then from, from RH and RM. Is that what you're saying?
Family?
Yeah.
No, it's just going to affect the whole zone. So, from the last vote, one of the things that staff would take away is that we would allow it in RM, RH, and mixed use zones.
Including, including, including standard votes? We didn't give...
We only had option four, allowing it in...
We did vote on that one.
Forget about the options, we just voted to ban it from those, those options.
We have two directions, ban it from the, the single-family zones and allow it in the mixed-use zone. That's the only direction we have.
Well, we voted at the beginning.
We voted on the mixed use a long time ago.
Yeah, we did vote on that, so that's...
It was 4-3.
So, I, I agree with Commissioner Ruland, let's take a vote and see if we can get a consensus on the, whether we should, how do you want to, we can say it either way, in the positive or the negative, whether we want to allow it in the, so how do you guys want to say it?
Yeah.
Okay, whether you want to allow it in the RM, RH.
Who is in favor on a straw vote basis of allowing, short-term, STLU's in RM and RH? Who's in favor of that? Okay?
Okay, I think you got some good direction here. Just to be clear, I want to, I'm okay with it in all residential zones.
What's that?
I'm, I support it in all residential zones with some regulations.
So, but what you just voted for was not doing it in one zone and doing it in another zone?
Okay.
That's not my understanding.
So, you have it, you have it, the vote correct.
That's exactly what these two votes mean.
You have it, okay?
Five to two with Commissioner Ruland.
And they'll have to, I'll have to withdraw that, because my understanding was, am I okay with it in those particular zones as well? And the answer is yes, as well as the other residential, all residential zones, so...
So, the vote is 4-3 then? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, it must be, yeah.
So, you're against?
No, no, no.
Four, or four allowing it? I'm in favor of, of this in all residential zones.
But that's not what we're...
That's not the vote, I have the same position as you. The question is...
Come on, people, keep it simple. The vote was, the vote was, who's in favor of allowing it in RM and RH? Okay?
Only.
No, 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 not only, just, no, not only.
In addition to. Yeah, that's...
Wait, no, wait, wait, wait.
But that's the net effect of the two votes.
In addition to all Rs now, you're saying?
No, 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 just, just keep it simple, what we're voting on.
Well, he's saying only, and you're going, no.
The vote is only allowing it in residential medium and high. But the previous vote was to only, was to disallow it in residential low. So, the net effect of the two votes is that we're, is that we're, where the direction we're giving to staff is, we don't want it in residential low, but we do want it in residential medium and high. That's the net effect of these two votes.
And mixed use.
And mixed use, yeah. Three votes.
That's what we voted on.
We voted on RM and RH.
That's right.
That's right.
That's, that's the, that's what...
And we voted on RL.
And the mixed use was already, and the, and the lower residential, we voted against.
Right.
That's correct.
Do we have it all sorted out now, Eileen?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, what else?
Do you want to take more straw votes on it?
No, I don't think we...
Well, I'd like to ask one question. With all these restrictions at all...
Everybody has their...
I think we need to take one more straw vote, forgive me. Because there's some confusion here.
Commissioner Ruland, you confused me about your vote, because...
Well, let me, let me explain.
Hold it, just a minute, one conversation, Mr. Smith.
There, there is single-family detached in both RM and RH, in, in the zone.
That's correct.
So, are we saying that in those single families, we're going to allow it?
That are within that zone.
Within that zone.
Within that zone.
Within that zone, yes, within that zone.
So, so, between our votes here, we've given directions to staff to, to, to focus on not allowing it in residential low, and allowing it in residential medium and high.
And mixed use.
And mixed use.
Yeah.
So, the question I have for, is straw vote, given what was, what we were speaking of earlier in the evening, was, is, we should vote on, do we want to have a consistent policy in the residential zones, whether we either allow it in all the zones or disallow it in all the zones?
No, I won't even support a vote of that.
Well, someone seconded it.
No? We've already...
Those two votes, or, I'm sorry, those three votes basically got us to option two, which is residential medium, allowing it in residential medium, residential high, and mixed-use zones.
Right.
So, that failed the first time, two to five.
Because we hadn't had this discussion yet.
We break it all apart, and now we're getting direction. But if, if we come back with an ordinance that has all of this, and we're asking for one vote, we don't want it to end up two to five.
Right, so you...
So, I'd like option two to be looked at again.
You've got your votes.
You've got your votes right now.
Take your direction.
All right.
You've got your votes. Don't make a conflict.
I move we have a vote on option two, as a whole.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
What are we voting on?
Option two. It just consolidates...
Damn it.
It doesn't consolidate what we just said.
No, because we are saying that one residential neighborhood is more deserving than another. I think they're all...
No?
So, you're saying that option two is RM, RH, and mixed use?
It is, we can regulate it accordingly.
Yes.
Okay, we already voted on it.
We already voted on it.
We already voted on it.
Enough, we're done, we got a vote.
Don't comp, don't make this conflict.
Okay.
We did it.
Okay, do we have a second? I withdraw this second.
I was thinking it.
Is that, is that my motion?
No.
No. It's granted?
Option two?
It's basically consolidating all those, to make it clear for staff.
All right, and I will say, my comment on that is that we're not consolidating what we just voted on. Option two does not, does not reflect what we just voted on. Option two doesn't say anything about residential low, what we just voted on was...
Yes, it does. By omitting it, it's saying it's not allowed.
By omitting it, it, or not voting on it.
Okay.
As long as we're clear on that. We are specifically prohibiting residential low here, in option two.
All motion and a second.
Or option two.
All in favor of the motion?
Well, see? All, all opposed? It's basically what we did.
I didn't vote for RM and RH.
Call the opposed.
No, he didn't, I voted against it.
You going to finish the vote?
The vote before, I didn't vote for it. I was the only one that didn't.
You have it?
Yeah. And Commissioner Smith, you voted opposed to...
I'm opposed.
And Commissioner Wu?
No, wait a minute.
Commissioner Wu did not vote for option two? I don't believe he did.
He just seconded? He did.
Well, the motion was allow them in those zones. The motion, at the beginning, it didn't say, it doesn't allow them.
The straw vote too far.
The straw vote was, I just, I clarified it for the vote, it was option two, with the addition of making it clear that we are not allowing it in residential low.
But that does not what it says.
Right, I did not support that.
But that's, well, you guys tell me, because that's what Bart told me.
That's what I understand, to me.
I think we're, we're clear here, aren't we?
No, we're not.
I thought, within three straw votes, you had enough direction to go off and try to work on something.
But he, he wants to concur that he has a right, we all understand it, so he doesn't get blindsided when he brings back the resolution.
It's way off, it's way off the base now, look, guys.
Yeah.
Look, we voted, you, we, we...
Hold on a minute, how simple can we make it? I want to finish the vote that we were just taking. We had, what was it, three votes for that option two that includes a restriction on residential low? And that means there are four against it, is that, am I correct on that? Yes?
Well, Bart did have a motion.
No, it doesn't say that.
I second, it doesn't mean I support it.
That's what the motion was, though. We can redo the motion. To clarify.
What a mess.
What's so hard to figure out here?
Then I'm going to, then I'm going to...
We had it done.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to clarify this.
Okay, what you guys voted against?
And then they voted for RM and RH, I thought they, they said, I went against it, but I thought the rest was...
Let me try and clarify this and, and move for this straw vote. Option two, with the addition, the zoning option two, allow in RM, RH, and all mixed-use zones, and specifically do not allow them in the low, residential low and RML zones. So, it's option two with the additional text of, do not allow in RL and RML. That's the vote.
And RVL.
Sorry, RVL, the, the low-density zones, yes. So, that's, that's the motion.
Seven.
Okay. All in favor?
You voted for four.
I know.
No, I didn't vote for four.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I did that.
Okay.
I voted against it.
And these four are opposed.
Commissioner Wu voted for something in there.
Let's go back.
Well, my position is always, we should allow them in all our zones. That's never changed.
Okay.
That, all right, so we did vote...
What we have is, we have three commissioners that want to allow it in all zones. So, when you, when you subdivided out and just talk about individual ones, or should they be allowed in that zone or not, then you get a cross vote. So, the peers, you have a majority, but you don't, because you have three commissioners who are saying, I'm only for it if they're in all zones, but not for it if they're limited in one of the zones. So, that's why we have a stalemate. And I don't know how to direct you or give you another way to look at it to change that vote.
That's your stalemate.
Well, we voted to not allow it in, in, in single-family, R, a low or medium, did we not?
Yeah, that was clear.
That was clear. We, we voted four to three, not to allow it in, in single...
So, that doesn't make sense that when you take the other side of that vote, that now we don't have a 4-3. It's the same vote, just...
What do you mean it's the same vote?
Well, you have, you only have...
Which is the happy vote?
Four basic zones, right? You have mixed-use, single-family, residential medium, and residential high. If you say you're not going to allow it in single-family, and you vote 4-3 for that, and then you vote the opposite, we're not going to allow it in the other three, which is de facto not allowing it in the residential low, it's the same vote, just a different way of saying it.
Yeah.
And we're going to have two different votes.
I think...
And that's why the initial vote over here was, was clear that you, that you made.
I, I think...
That you made, and then we tried to double-speak and double-talk about this, when in fact the first two votes were, were clear and concise.
No, they were...
And we had four votes for this.
They were contradictory. Because, put together, they were, or not contradictory, they weren't compatible.
They were not.
Clearly by the vote with option two. But here's the thing. This is what we know right now. There are four... There are four commissioners who do not want to allow this in some zones and not others. I think that, it seems to me that that's a... That's a pretty clear statement amongst the majority.
It was pretty clear we had a vote that for residential low, the three categories of residential low is not appropriate based on our general plan.
Yeah. Yes.
That's absolutely clear.
That's absolutely clear. It was very... It was four votes on that. It was absolutely clear. There can't be clearer. It was a simple motion and a second, and it was voted for four. That's simple. Let's not confuse it.
We've already had four-three on mixed use.
There's no double-speak. It was very clear what we were voting on with option two. Allow it here, don't allow it there.
You're making it difficult.
Yeah, Jim, you're making... You're trying to... You're trying to convolute the whole argument, I think. I thought it was very clear in the series of votes we had.
Well, let's try and dissect this a little bit better. Does everybody agree that if we don't allow it in the low-density residential, that that de facto means that we are allowing it in the other three zones?
De facto means, I think, de facto, yeah. I think that's...
Okay.
Then we had a four-three vote on that exact...
Yes, we did.
Yeah. So, then when we flip it around and say just the opposite, if I say, well, what if we take the vote that we allow it in residential medium, residential high, and mixed use? That... Does everybody agree that de facto says that we don't allow it in the residential low zone?
No.
No.
No. No.
Why not?
Because it doesn't say that.
Well, I'm just... I'm just trying to clear up your vote, because you have a conflicting vote for the same thing.
Don't try to clear the vote. We voted not to allow it in low and medium, very low and low residential. Is that correct?
There's three. Very low.
Are low and medium.
Low, R and H.
Right.
And RM.
We voted not to allow it in those zones.
Absolutely. That's very clear. Very clear.
That's very clear.
Yep.
And we voted to then allow it in RM and RH and mixed use. We voted for that. That is simple, and it's concise, and it's our intent.
Okay.
The three votes that we had...
Just a minute. I just was wanting to give everybody a little break while I ask this question. Does anybody have that section of the general plan? Can you access that pretty quickly and read that to me?
Which section?
I want to understand why my fellow commissioners are not wanting it in other residential zones, want to prohibit it in single-family, and we're basing it on some language in the general plan. I mean, I can get to that as well, but do you have it handy? I just... Maybe it'll help me understand something.
Didn't we... I thought we voted on that.
Well, this is for my own clarification. General plan, land use zone. Achieve the city's vision of establishing and maintaining a balance of use that provides, one, the diversity of residential neighborhoods and housing opportunities. Retain and enhance established residential neighborhoods. Provide for the revitalization, adaptive reuse, and improvement of deteriorated neighborhoods and historic buildings and districts. Provide opportunities in new residential and targeted areas for new opportunities for infill and existing... Within the capacity of existing infrastructure and public service. There's about eight or nine. I'm just picking some of these out here. The land we plan to use to locate in these particular neighborhoods. So, Chair Brown, what I was looking for is, I want to see how we are able to, in our minds, separate these residential zones.
I'll tell you how I can. I do it.
By density?
No, by impact on... I think we can adapt to the residential medium and high much easier with vacation rentals than we can to the low-density areas. By the types of buildings, and when we get into it and make all these caveats about it, we can be set, you know, picking and choosing basically where it goes and how many, et cetera, and I think it can be made compatible with those zones far easier than the low-density.
Amen. Okay. Well, I just...
Here's another goal.
I still don't see it.
A goal. Achieve a mix of residential neighborhoods and housing types that meets the diverse economic, physical needs of the residents, that is compatible with existing neighborhoods and the surrounding environment setting that reflects community expectations for high quality.
Okay. That expectation, I think it's fair to say, can be in any residential zone for any family.
But we voted.
Well, I'm talking about... I appreciate what you're saying, but... And I also, Chairman Brown, thank you for reading that. I needed that. So, I feel more confident in my position.
Well, I want to ask my fellow...
You say it's okay to have them in any zone.
With proper control, with mechanisms in there. Absolutely. And that's what we're doing here.
I don't think we can do it. I don't think we can enforce it.
I'll ask all fellow commissioners. If we have a VL zone with 20 acres, and there's a home, maybe a mansion in the middle of the land, can we allow this use? Should we allow this use? You're far away from the neighbor. They have enough lawn area to accommodate activities. They have enough space to park their cars. Why we don't allow them?
Because we don't have someone with 20 acres here in San Clemente. It's not a practical comparison at all. It's not realistic.
We have that zone. Do we have any home?
We voted on this.
You know?
It was very clear in our vote.
Okay.
To help me convolute it.
Jim, do we have any home on those estate lots, RVL zone?
I don't know then.
Very few, if any, on a 20-acre lot. I mean, maybe... I don't even think the Nixon estate's on a 20-acre lot.
No, it's not. They subdivided it. Thirty-five acres.
So...
So, it's...
This zone does not exist? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's an RVL zone.
Okay. So, why we're banning them?
Because it... There's nothing... We don't have anything like that here in San Clemente. It's not a practical exercise to go through. It's fantasy. We don't have anything like that here at all.
There is a zone listed in our zoning. If we don't have any, then should we eliminate that zone designation?
We have an RVL zone. There are some lots that are over 20 acres. They're mostly like canyons and things like that. I don't even know if any of them are developed. I think right now there's a subdivision proposal to do one house on a 20-acre lot. So, there's a couple, you know, and then there's a number of them that have very large lots that, you know, may might make the 20-acre size, but they're clearly over, you know, an acre. So, there are some. Anyway, that's not really, I think, germane to the top at this point.
It's pretty on the margins here, you know, it's like... But, okay.
Well, I don't think we're going to get any more direction.
I don't think we are.
You got the direction.
Thought we had it. I think we're done.
Okay.
We're going to pass. You want to...
We made a lot of movement.
So...
Yes.
Go to another study session.
We have...
You have a regular meeting next week. Is that normal, a dinedied meeting?
We have an advertised public hearing next week, so we'll seize that time.
I'll be absent, I guess. We'll be in charge.
Adam, if you can send me a PDF file of this document, I will put my remarks and give it back to you.
PDF or Word version?
PDF is fine.
PDF.
PDF, please. Send both.
I'll send both to everybody.
Jim, the only direction I'd like to see is how we control how many of these goes in RM, RH. I don't think it's as big an issue on the mixed use as it is in those two. How we... Just how we go about it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll move that we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on February 17, 2016, in Council Chambers of City Hall, located on Havana Presidio, San Clemente, California. Yes, that's it.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, twenty-four.
Probably. We've got a lot of meetings.
Seventeenth.
The 17th and the 24th.